We are now live.
Good evening, everyone. This opens the Santa Rosa City School Board meeting for the evening of August 11th, 2021, and I am going to turn this over to our clerk, Ever Florist, tonight for our land acknowledgement.
I'd like to yield my time and space to the land acknowledgement to Rose Hammack, a local Poma woman who is a community educator and organizer here in Sonoma County. She's currently working for the Big Picture Learning Native American Initiative in Northern California. Rose?
Hello, everyone. I would just like to do a quick introduction of myself and give our land acknowledgement. So Chinta A., how are you? My name is Rose Hammack. I'm Poma Wilekia Maidu, and I work with Big Picture Learning Native American Initiative. And to give a little information, land acknowledgement is honoring the land that we all stand on, all live on. You know, this is occupied land. Although I'm Poma, my ancestors don't descend from this area of Sonoma County. My ancestors reside from Lake and Mendocino County. So even as native and indigenous people ourselves, we take land acknowledgement serious, not only to give respect to the people who were here in the past, but for the people who are here today. And so with my land acknowledgement I'm giving, I want to honor, again, the past, the present, and the future generations of Southern Poma, Coast Miwok, and Mishwaukaw people who occupy most of where we call Sonoma County, places like Hillsburg, Windsor, Santa Rosa, and so on. And it's an honor to live on this land. It's an honor to gather medicine and food on this land. And it's just a blessing to live here. The land is beautiful. It's well taken care of. And as a traditional native person myself, it's our duty to continue to take care of this land. And although you may or may not be native or indigenous, it's important that we give honor and respect to this land. Just very grateful that I could give that short land acknowledgement today. And thank you all for being here and for listening.
Thank you, Rose, very much. We appreciate that. Thank you, Clerk Florist. At this point, we are going to now stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance together. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Oh, I like the flag. I like the flag in the square. Thank you, moderator two. Tonight, I'd like to recognize that this is our first meeting. Well, it should have been last month, but we did not have a meeting last month. So this is our first meeting with our new superintendent, Anna Trinell. Very glad that we are here with you, that you are here with us. And also the first meeting for Associate Superintendent Dr. Kimberly Armstrong. Give a little wave, Dr. Armstrong. Thank you so much for being with us tonight, your first board meeting with us. And also to Assistant Superintendent Michael Shepherd, who is our new Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources. Where? Yes, where are you? Okay, it's on a different screen. Okay, thank you for all being here. And also to our, the original guy, our Deputy Superintendent Rick Edson, also in the cabinet. Thank you, really acknowledging that. I know that you have all been on the job for six weeks, I think, only, and it's been a huge lift for you, going from one COVID year to the next new opening COVID year. So thank you so much. We appreciate all your work. I think you've been nonstop. I want to, as I usually do, do a short grounding for us as together because I believe this is incredibly important work for us as we are educating public educators in our city. And that as we begin school tomorrow morning, I want to recognize that this is our third COVID year in a row. This is the third one that we have been affected by COVID. And it's really appropriate now to acknowledge all the challenges that we have faced, our students have faced, our staff, our families, our parents, in all their different roles and responsibilities. But that the overarching priorities that we have are always front and center. And our health and safety, the physical and emotional well-being of everybody, and the continued academic growth of our students, those are two right there for us. We are surely weary of this pandemic. And it's a testament to folks' resilience that we collectively, together, right, collectively, keep going, filling in when others falter, accepting and seeking help when we falter because nobody can keep it going all the time. And this is our community, and I know that I'm glad to be here. I'm confident, grateful, and heartened to be with so many who are focused on our collective health and welfare. As we each fulfill our roles, we make life full. So when we're working on tough things together, it just makes our lives more full. It just expands our heart more. And we don't know what COVID or fire season or power shutouts are going to bring for this school year. It's kind of like everyone's at the ready. But I always return to the comfort that we are doing this together and that we are putting heads together. And then if not, who will if it's not us, right? Who will? It's us. So I and the entire board, I know, are looking forward to our new school year with anticipation, a little bit of dread, but anticipation, knowing that we'll be able to handle it and know that all of you, all of you are giving your very best. We thank you. Thank you. So going back to the agenda, there were no, there's no actions taken in closed session to report. There are no items considered in closed session or action in open session. Do we have any statements of extension tonight from my board members? Don't see any hands, but you have to speak up. This iPad doesn't show everybody. And we, do we have any adjustments to the agenda? I do have one. Does anybody have another? So the adjustment I'd like to make to the agenda is that we are going to swear in our new board member. We have a new board member tonight, our student board member, her name is Georgia Beard, and you can see her on the screen. And I'm going to tell a little bit about her. And then we will swear her in. Tonight's her first meeting, and tomorrow is her first day of school as a senior at Montgomery High School. She is an environmental activist, and she's going to talk a little bit later during her board report time. So let's see, we are not going to stand up so I can actually see your face, right, not your middle. And you're just going to repeat after me. You're going to just hold up your, your hand and just. Hi, Georgia Beard.
Hi, Georgia Beard.
To solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
Solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And that I take this obligation freely.
And that I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations and welcome, Georgia. We are very proud of you. And we'll hear a little, we'll hear some from you in a few minutes, okay?
Okay, thanks.
Great. This brings us to public comment on agenda items, items not on the agenda tonight. We are going to be, as usual, giving folks two minutes to speak because we are really tired of our meetings going so long. It's not the public, it is progress us and everything we need to do as a board. And so be succinct, get your point across, and board members, this goes for us too.
President Fong, would we first like to call for any comment on consent F items?
As I always forget. Yes, thank you so much, Dana.
Thank you. I will lower all hands at this time. If you'd like an item pulled for discussion from the consent or the F items, please raise your hand.
And remember, you're not going to comment now. We just know to pull that so you can comment at the end of the meeting. So that's kind of a long wait, but that's how it goes.
And it does not look like we have any hands at this time.
Thank you.
So if there are members of the public that would like to address an item that is not on the agenda, please raise your hand at this time.
And we are also going to ask for students to raise their hands first.
And there are no students with their hands raised. So it looks like our first speaker is Mara Ryan.
Hi, good evening, everyone, and welcome Superintendent Trinell and all our, our Georgia Beard. I, everyone, and hello. I'm just voicing a concern, and I may have addressed elsewhere, and I'll continue to look. But with the redistricting for Cook students to Slater, I'm a little concerned because all the students who were formerly students going to cook from the Bellevue Union School District that now have Slater as their home district middle school, the closest district bus picks up down by Costco, and many of us live much like three, four miles south of there. Usually for the children going to cook, there'd be a bus down near, you know, southern Santa Rosa Avenue. And so it's like a three or four mile walk for my daughter to make it to a bus that would take her to Slater. So I'm not sure if that was an accidental oversight, but it's going to be kind of challenging if there aren't, isn't a a bus route added for the Taylor Mountain students. And thank you very much. I know it's crazy times, and I very much appreciate all that you're doing. And, you know, thank you.
Thank you, Mara. And our next speaker is Sherry Cabral.
Can you guys hear me? Okay, good evening, President Fong, members of the board. My name is Sherry Cabral. I am the Secretary Treasurer for the North Bay Building and Construction Trades Council. And I just wanted to take a quick moment to say welcome to new Superintendent Trinell, as well as to Dr. Armstrong and to Mr. Shepherd. It's a pleasure to have you all here. I look forward to really wonderful, positive working relationships with you guys in the future. As a partner in education, we run all the, we run the apprenticeship programs for post-secondary students that are in, in the region. And also to board member Beard. So welcome as a student board member, but more importantly, also congratulations on your upcoming senior year. So my daughter started her senior year yesterday. So I know this is a huge endeavor for all of you, and it's wonderful to know that even though we've been through the pandemic, you guys will have a little more of a normal senior year than maybe you otherwise would have had. So congratulations, it's a big step, enjoy it. And to all of you staff that are in your new positions, congratulations and welcome.
Thank you, Sherry. And our next speaker is Shelby Dodson. Shelby, if you're there, could you please unmute yourself?
Can you hear me? Hello?
We can hear you.
Okay. Hi, my name is Shelby Dodson. I'm currently a new resident in your county and a community activist. And I have a couple of concerns regarding children and people of color and the equity in the community as far as being able to enforce or mandate policies due to COVID-19 and vaccinations. I have only really one question, and that question is, what are, or something to think about, what are the measures that you guys are putting in place for people who are apprehensive or refusing to go ahead and vaccinate themselves due to CDC guidelines? And what measures are you putting in place to protect them from any retribution from community members or individuals who may not have the same viewpoints that they have? That's pretty much the only food for thought that I have at the moment, taking the time to think about these considerations. I just hope that it doesn't hit deaf ears, and we consider how these things impact our local community and fellow members of society.
So we will be addressing that in our discussion, item number one on the agenda, and you can kind of tune in for that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Dodson. It looks like those are all of our hands for this evening.
Right, thank you, everyone, to try and do with public comment. We are moving to the D part of our agenda, reports. And CSCA is up first with the report. Chapter seventy-five.
And President Afonso unfortunately could not attend this evening. She did just want to express that she hopes the board has had a chance to review the updated job descriptions.
Thank you for saying that. And we're moving to the Santa Rosa Teachers Association report.
If there is a representative for the Santa Rosa Teachers Association, could you please raise your hand at this time? Thank you. And it looks like we will be moving over Catherine Howell.
Hi, good evening, everyone, and hello, President Fong, Superintendent Trinell, members of the board. Happy to be here in my new role as president.
Welcome, Catherine, as do president of SRTA, your first board meeting.
Not a lot to report tonight. I just wanted to, like others have already said, said, welcome to Mr. Shepherd and Dr. Armstrong. We've already had a chance to meet very briefly in person, and we're just looking forward to continuing the strong relationship that we have built with the board and with the administrators at the district office. And having a great year. Our teachers are excited and ready for tomorrow morning. And it's, everyone is very excited about being back full-time with kids, full day of school. Our first full day of school with students full-time in our classrooms since I'm going to go with Friday, the thirteenth of March, 2020. And so it's pretty exciting. Our teachers are ready to go. And just very happy to be here representing them today. And that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, President Howell. Have a great day, everybody. Great day at school tomorrow. Superintendent Trinell, you have your report to give us.
Yes, good evening, everyone. Thank you for your time this evening. I would like to start off by sharing my entry plan with you tonight. I was hoping to do so in July, but that's okay. No time like the present. Can you see a document that says Superintendent's entry plan? Perfect. First thing that I like to do, and I'll be brief, but the cover of my entry plan is really a symbol of steps forward. This picture I took at my first school that I visited in the spring where students and teachers were present at Rincon Valley, excuse me, Hidden Valley Elementary School. And so it's very symbolic for me to have it as a part of my entry plan. And I enjoyed my visit at Hidden Valley. So a little bit about me, I've been in education for twenty-two years. I have been and had the opportunity to be involved in a variety of positions and perspectives that have allowed me to become your superintendent today and provide the support that we need in order to move forward. I have degrees from UC Davis and Sacramento State. And I have a husband of thirty years, two sons who are nineteen and twenty-seven, two dogs and a turtle. So that rounds out my immediate family. A little bit about this entry plan. It really does highlight some of the first steps that I'm taking and how I work with all of you in our district and in our community. I do believe that relationship building is very important, and it does set us towards our goals together as we work together on expectations and outcomes. So there are four goals in my entry plan. The first one is around developing, developing a strong collaborative relationship with our board as a governance team and staying focused on our mission, vision, and priorities and thinking about how we measure those along the way. Our second goal, my second goal is how I establish relationships, trust, confidence, and capacity building through communication and positive relationships with all stakeholders, which includes our, the own, our own members and employees, as well as those in the community. So visiting and being visible, conducting listening sessions, and designing professional growth opportunities for our employees in order to stay focused and driven around our MVPs or our mission vision and priorities. Third goal is to continue to stay focused on social emotional wellness and mindfulness, utilizing the MTSS or multi-tiered system of supports to complement our educational program. And that includes engaging our partnerships and curricula focused on social emotional wellness. And I will extend to mental health to review and design the processes that address SEL through our MTSS or multi-tiered systems of support for our students and staff, and then to work with staff to integrate social emotional learning into the academic program. Fourth goal is to continue to review our strategic goals, programs, practices, and budgets through an equity, social justice, and inclusivity lens, and then establish measurable benchmarks in order to connect student achievement outcomes in order to accelerate effectiveness. A little bit about my core beliefs. I believe that students are at the center of our work. I believe that we are partners with families in the education of our youth. I believe that effective teaching and learning supports includes equitable, accessible, culturally responsive practices that serve each and every student, and that all members of the Santa Rosa City Schools District are responsible for how we engage and uplift our youth. And last, my commitment. So as the superintendent, I am committed to ensuring that every child experiences a high, a high-quality educational program. Our students deserve to be prepared and empowered for their future, and I will ensure that we are focused on our district vision to send students into the world empowered to find purpose, think critically, embrace diversity, work together, adapt to our changing planet, and live healthy, fulfilling lives. I believe and trust in the collective energy and positivity of our community to uplift our youth and help them reach their full potential. And I believe that every member of our team, from the teaching staff to our office staff, to our food services, maintenance and operations, technology, you name it, that we are in this together to support our students and families. That concludes my entry plan and my report for this evening. Back to you, President Fong.
Thank you. That was very inspiring. For the board president report tonight, I just want to simply say that I want to thank my, my colleagues on the board and that I have been spending quite a bit of time this past summer and spring working on governance types things with the California School Boards Association, studying governance, reading, talking to other board members across the state of California in terms of how we are the most efficient, the most productive, the most thoughtful, reflective, and effective governance team. So we will continue to, to work on that. It's always a process. We will never get there. But I know that each of you works hard at that too, and I appreciate that. And also I think we need to kind of take a pause and just say that, okay, we are starting a new school year. I mean, we have election cycles that kind of start November, you know, in that kind of year. But the school cycle is right now, like starting a new cycle with new superintendent and a lot of new cabinet members. And so if we just take a deep breath and pause and just remember that, again, it's a process. We, we make the path together, and that each of us as board members have a, have a commitment as well to our students, not to our trustee areas, to all of our students. We, you know, we represent a trustee area, but we really are in this for every single student. So Superintendent Trinell, when you talked about every student, we are committed to every student. And in our mission vision, as we keep repeating, and I really like it, that's a live thing that we live, that we are looking for a transformative education and that equitable access to education. And I know that when we hired Anna, she was totally committed to that. And I know that everyone that she's hiring and working with, and when they're interviewing people, that they are committed to that as well. And, but I want to make sure that we understand, board members, my colleagues, that we keep looking for that. What is changing things? What, what, what is the change? What are we spending our time talking about? I don't want to spend my time talking about the things that are going on, you know? I want to spend my time talking about what is really making a difference for, for our children, for our students, and how we, policy-wise, we can affect that, right? We are living in the policy land, and Superintendent Trinell is going to make that policy happen. That is what we are counting on you to do. And so I'm thankful for my fellow board members, and let's continue to be the an effective governance team, and let's just keep getting better and better. She'll see. I'm just going to start, I'm going to call in you because I'm so bad at finding your name, finding your hands up on this little tiny iPad screen. So I'm going to start with our vice president. You can say no report or pass or whatever. So we'll start with Vice President John McCormick.
Um, I don't really have a big report other than to say, I'm just super excited that school is starting and that we have the opportunity to go five days a week, full session for our teachers, for our staff, for our students. And I just want to wish everybody strength and fierceness in the face of the adversity that we are facing and a little extra boost of energy. I know this is a very heavy lift for all of our families, all of our staff, all of our teachers, but the anticipation is there. People are excited. Kids really want to come back to school. And so I just want to wish everybody best luck ever on the first day or two here and that we hit our stride quickly and smoothly going into next week. So just wanted to say that.
Thank you, Clerk Florist.
Thank you, President Fong. I just want to say, welcome to everyone. I'm looking forward to a tremendous and stupendous year. I had the opportunity and the good fortune to go to the new staff onboarding orientation with President Fong. I have to say that I'm very proud of the work our administrators have done in terms of hiring the, you know, the best for our students. Thank you and kudos for that. And I am going to end by saying, welcome back, and I'm looking forward to, you know, a prosperous year. Thank you.
Trustee Sheffield.
No report. I just want to say, like everyone else, I'm very much looking forward to tomorrow. Got two very excited boys who I don't know if I'm going to get them to sleep tonight. I heard from a lot of parents and a lot of students over the summer who also just excited about a return to some sense of normalcy. So tomorrow's a really big day. Excited, and I know we'll, we'll have a good start to the school year.
Thank you. Trustee Manieri.
Same as everyone else, no report, but just.
Same as everyone else, no report, but just the biggest welcome to our staff and our students. Um, and I'm really excited. I'm hoping that I can be out at one of our school sites on Friday uh, to be welcoming everybody in person. Um, so I'm, I'm really looking forward to that. And I'm just really looking forward to, to seeing how this school year goes. So I'm, I'm really grateful also to all of our, our staff and our teachers who have made this even possible. So thank you to everyone.
Thank you. Uh, trustee Delacruz.
Adding my voice of thanks to my colleagues. Um, special thanks to the amazing people at Santa Rosa High who hosted freshman orientation this morning. That was amazing for my son and for me and for all of his friends. Um, Principal Clissold, I am so sorry. I swear I didn't tell anybody that you printed Ole Miss schedule for him, but people saw me walking around with that sheet of paper and they were like, did you go to the office? So, um, thank you for just being so amazing and for really making kids feel so comfortable coming back, um, feeling so safe and so, um, like they belong. Um, so thank you, thank you, thank you. Um, I also just want to say for those folks who are staying outside in distance learning, um, it's okay, we got you. Um, totally understand. It's scary out there. Um, and I'm just grateful for everybody in this world who is wearing their mask and washing their hands and getting vaccinated. Um, because we know that those are the things that will keep our community and our kids safe. Um, so please don't stop doing all of those important things. Keep vaccinating yourselves, keep asking hard, good questions, keep talking to people and listening to science. Um, and keep wearing your masks as hard as it is. And thank you, especially to the little ones for continuing to wash your hands. Um, President Fong, you said something earlier tonight in your report that I just wanted to reflect here that, um, we make this road by walking it. And it reminds me of one of my favorite poems in the whole world. Um, and I'm just going to read one line from it and it says, and that, that means traveler, there's no road. There's, there's the path that you make when you walk it. Um, and so I'm just grateful for all of these folks and especially the new folks on the team um, for making this path and for making it smooth and beautiful. Um, and I'm just grateful to you, adelante, Santa Rosa.
Thank you. Uh, trustee Beard.
Hey, everybody. Um, I am so grateful for this opportunity and I'm so happy to be here. And I'm also so excited to go back to school and I'm feeling very comfortable with how it's set up, feeling very safe. And I know a lot of people that are too. So I would just like to thank all of you for contributing to making school feel sort of normal again. And one of the projects I'm taking on this year is to facilitate and sort of create a recycling program for my school. So if anybody has any questions about that or is interested, you can contact me through the superintendent. And yeah, thank you so much. I'm so excited.
First meeting and first day of senior year tomorrow. So really thank you, trustee Beard. All right. Thank you, everybody. Did I miss anybody? We're good. Okay. Um, there is no CSBA report tonight. Our delegate is not here at the meeting. So we are moving right on to our discussion items. The one, this is discussion, it's the return to in-person learning, the big thing in front of us right now. And I'm going to turn this to over to Superintendent Trinell.
Thank you so much, Board President Fong, and good evening, everyone. Um, I would like to take a moment just to reintroduce Cabinet, who will be helping me tonight um, with introducing information. So I will start with Deputy Superintendent Rick Edson, who will be providing information tonight. Our Assistant Superintendent of HR, Mike Shepherd, and our Associate Superintendent of Educational Services, Dr. Kimberly Armstrong. So I'm going to start out tonight by just giving some general information. First is, and you heard this in my message in my entry plan, but we remain student-centered and student-focused. We are very excited to welcome students back full-time, in-person, five days a week, starting with the first day of school tomorrow, August 12th. As some may know, today, the California Department of Public Health issued an order requiring verification of vaccination status among eligible TK to twelve school workers and establishing diagnostic screening, screening testing of unvaccinated workers. We will review the details of the order promptly and put a plan in place to comply. The order takes effect at midnight, actually 12:01 AM on August 12th. And schools and school districts have until October fifteenth of this year to be in full compliance. Uh, we do plan to be in compliance before that. Uh, but we have some additional moving parts that we need to get into place to ensure that our plan is clear and that we message accordingly. As I mentioned in my entry plan, social emotional learning is going to be a strong focus this school year and beyond. As we know, we've been through a lot and in this community over years. So we want to be sure that our students know we are here for them academically and emotionally. Mental health supports are available for both of our students and staff as we navigate this year. We have posted some frequently asked questions on our website under the return to school tab in English and in Spanish based on questions that we received at the return to school community forum last Wednesday and also last night at our Spanish community forum. I just want to take a moment to thank everyone who was able to participate. We did not anticipate having a capacity. Last week, we had over one thousand people trying to participate on a steady basis that night. Um, and we welcomed several hundred more last night at our community forum. Um, I want to thank also our panelists, our interpreters, and our guest physicians who joined us. I'm going to now turn it, oh, turn it over to Dr. Armstrong, who will begin some sharing around educational services information. Dr. Armstrong.
Great. Thank you, Superintendent Trinell. Um, I first want to talk about Assembly Bill 104, also referred to as AB 104. Now, AB 104 permits parents of students who were in high school last academic year, so 2021, or students who are eighteen and over um, to request letter grades from last year to be changed to either pass if they received a grade of A, B, C, or D, or no pass if they received the letter F. A no pass is not calculated in the grade point average. And if a student earned the passing grade, again, for example, a D, a student can request a pass and the D mark will no longer be calculated in the grade point average. The application to request a grade change is due on Monday, August sixteenth. Tomorrow, all students in grades 10th through 12th will receive a letter in their English Language Arts class. Also, I want to talk about Assembly Bill 130, also referred to as AB 130. Um, so that bill was passed in the California Legislature in July. And they direct schools to provide independent study to students impacted by COVID-19. And so families should be aware that this option is not the same as distance learning um, that was offered last year. The majority of the work will be done by the students on their own. So their pace, their schedule. So for the 2122 school year, students are required to, or I'm sorry, schools are required to offer an independent study option um, to be available to students whose health would be put at risk by in-person instruction. And that's as determined by, um, family members. Participation in independent study is optional and it's not required. Um, we have a link on our website where families can fill out the interest form and we have an orientation starting Thursday. And after this week, we will have orientation every Wednesday. And that's mandatory for Monday start. Now, there are specific requirements uh, for instructional time and it may be, it may include synchronous and asynchronous work. And uh, those expectations are outlined in the learning agreement that we must have signed uh, once a family commits. And just to, for vocabulary, live interaction means interaction between the student and school staff. It may also include some peers, so it may not be one-to-one, or it could be. And live interaction is provided for the purpose of maintaining school connectedness, right? And so this interaction may take place in person or in the form of internet or maybe even over the telephone. Synchronous instruction means classroom-style instruction um, or designated small group or one-on-one instructor, instruction um, delivered in person or in the form of, of course, the internet or, um, over, over the phone or anything that's live and that there's two-way communication between the teacher and students. And so there are different requirements for grade levels. So I just want to point out that kindergarten to third grade um, is daily synchronous instruction. And so that's going to be sixteen, sixty minutes every day. Uh, grades four through eight is a combination of both live interaction and at least weekly synchronous instruction. So that's synchronous instruction, sixty minutes per week. And grades nine through twelve, um, is the weekly synchronous instruction. So that'll be sixty minutes per week as well. Um, the other thing that I wanted to point out is that students may be eligible for the independent study program um, who have an IEP. And it's just important that families reach out to the school team for that approval or to make sure that, um, the qualification areas are, um, going to be able to fit into the model of independent study. So that is, conversations first starts at the school site. And if a family, as I said, determines that they'd like to pursue independent study, um, they begin by completing the online form. And uh, parents' right to request a parent-teacher conference prior to enrolling, um, we will be responsive to that. And uh, we, students who are enrolled in independent study for fifteen days or more, or who would like to return to in-person instruction will follow the procedures that we have outlined, um, in the orientation. And that includes disenrollment. So, uh, once a student starts an independent study and decides that they are ready to go back to their home school, uh, the parent or guardian first notifies the, the teacher. And that starts the process of, um, looping in the appropriate school site and district staff. And within five instructional days, the student will be returned back to their, their campus. Um, so again, the independent study, uh, form is the way to, um, enroll in the program. And, um, the orientation is this Thursday at ten AM. The other thing that I'd like to mention is our English Language Servicers, Services. So English Learner Services in Santa Rosa City Schools provides schools with instructional support, guidance, and direction to improve the instruction for English learners. Um, and this ensures their academic success. Those services are continuing in the 2122 school year. And our EL support team includes family engagement facilitators. It includes two, uh, sole counselors, so that's supporting our language learners, um, two English language specialists, um, that serve K-12 um, and English language teacher on special assignment and our English language director, who are all fabulous, by the way. Uh, they work to continue to support the services that are needed district-wide. And of course, the other service that is just as important is special education. And so when we talk about special education or special services, um, we know that students are gen ed first, right? Uh, we start with students, so students with IEPs, um, students receiving special education. It's a service and it's not a location. And, uh, we will continue to support our students in the 2122 school year. And then the, the last part that I wanted to mention is just social emotional commitment. As you heard our superintendent say, it's a priority of hers. It's a priority of Santa Rosa City Schools. And teachers have access to mental health services to assure that they are, um, in an appropriate place for their classrooms. Um, and we're aware of all of the needs, um, that are um, and will surface on, from our students. And our goal is to be responsive to those needs at as many levels as, uh, we can address. We are expanding our capacity to provide not only one-to-one, but group and family support all through our district. Um, and we will have parent information sessions to discuss supporting students and mental health over the duration of this year. Um, and of course, it's always exciting to talk about partnerships. We partner with the County Office of Education with Sonoma um, and also receive some grants. So given all that we've been through, um, as a district, individually, it's normal to experience the distress. Um, and of course, all of the other concerns, whether we're, you know, in a pandemic or coming out of a pandemic. And we want to normalize emotional needs and working, and we're working to reduce, um, stigmas. The one thing is, the pandemic has helped us all learn, um, to talk about our emotional needs. Um, and so, and that's a positive step forward. And we want to be here to support that. And, and the staff that we have helping to support that are eight full-time school-based therapists and, and social workers. And we expect to hire four more. Um, and so that would be one school-based therapist at each high school. And then, of course, then middle schools, um, share every other day. And then we continue to share school-based therapists at the elementary. We're also reducing counseling ratios at all our secondary schools. And we have a dedicated school psychologist for supporting and integrating students with disabilities for mental health services. Um, and then just one more partnership. Uh, we have a strong partnership with the University of San Francisco. And we work with them to develop a culturally responsive school-based approach that strives to employ bi-culture and bilingual therapists. And we're really excited about that. With that, I'll, I'd like to pass it to Mike.
Thank you. I'd like to go over now our, um, opening school guidelines that are, um, we, we have draft on there because they are changing as, as evidenced by the governor's order today. I want to start with masks. Masks will be required inside for all students and staff at all schools all of the time, regardless of vaccination status. People who have medical conditions that don't allow them to wear a mask are exempt, but they must wear a face shield with a drape on the bottom edge or another non-restrictive alternative if their condition permits it. The request for this process will go through the principal and the appropriate team for review. For an example, it could be an IEP team, 504 team, or an SST meeting. Schools will provide students with a face covering if they forget to bring one of their own. Masks are optional for all outdoor activities. And students who refuse to wear protective, protective mask inside will receive uh, aggressive consequences up to and including removal from in-person learning. And, um, we'll get to students with disabilities later on in this, uh, discussion. Uh, physical distancing, students will be separated to the maximum extent possible for the space that they are in. There are no minimum spacing guidelines. Therefore, bell schedules will be back to normal and not broken into cohorts. In the classroom, desks will be structured as appropriate for the classroom. For example, elementary classrooms with only twenty-four students may have more space between them than secondary students with classes of thirty-two students. Outside playground and physical education classes will not have any distancing restrictions. Distancing while eating will be maximized as much as possible, including outside and uh, utilizing the gym or multipurpose room or other spaces as appropriate. Visitors on campus, uh, non-essential visitors, volunteers, and community members will be asked not to come to an SRCS site unless a, unless a virtual option, uh, for example, video conferencing is not available. Anyone entering an SRCS campus may be subject to the same precautionary measures as expected for students and staff. And for drop-off pickup procedures, to minimize the number of people on school campuses, students may be dropped off and picked up at the designated locations at each school site. This may include curbside at the designated locations and/or the entrance to a gate onto the campus. For ventilation, we will be maximizing. For ventilation, we will be maximizing where possible, and this includes opening windows and doors when possible. And the previously provided air purifiers with HEPA filters should continue to be used in classrooms and office areas. Staying home with symptoms. School temperature checks or daily health screener. Um, it are no longer a requirement. Follow the strategy for staying home when sick and getting tested from the CDC. Staff member, staff members and students with symptoms of COVID nineteen are not to return to in-person instruction. Until they have met CDPH criteria to return to school for uh, those with symptoms. Number one, at least twenty-four hours have passed since resolution of fever without the use of fear reducing medications. And other symptoms have improved. And they have a negative test for SARS-CoV-2. Or the healthcare providers note that the symptoms are typical of an underlying chronic condition like allergies or asthma. Or a healthcare provider has diagnosed a different condition, or at least ten days have passed since, since symptom onset. Families will be reminded of the symptoms of COVID nineteen and will be asked to keep students home for twenty-four hours after the last symptoms have stopped. Staff that stay home will use personal sick leave. Unless they qualify for supplemental paid sick leave. Staff and students must stay home and cannot return without a doctor's clearance or a negative uh, COVID test. Students that show any of the COVID nineteen symptoms shall be immediately isolated and a parent or guardian must be available to pick them up immediately. And then uh, surveillance testing. In light of the new health order issued by the CDPH today. Requiring verification of vaccination status among eligible TK through twelve school workers. And establishes diagnostic screening, testing of unvaccinated workers. We are reviewing the details of the order promptly and will put a plan in place to comply. Uh, as Superintendent Trinell indicated, the order takes effect uh, tonight at twelve oh one AM. And school districts will have until October fifteenth to be in full compliance. And we are looking further at how we conduct testing for students at school sites. Vaccination status survey, also in light of the new health order. Uh, today requiring verification of vaccination status among eligible TK to twelve school workers. And establishing diagnostic screening testing of unvaccinated workers. We're reviewing those details of the order. Uh, promptly and will put a plan in place to comply. Uh, we are also working to understand the expectations for collecting vaccination status data. For students who are eligible as students were not a part of today's health order. Case reporting, contact tracing. Uh, SRCS will report any staff positive COVID nineteen cases to Sonoma County Public Health. School sites will assist the district office to provide assistance to the Sonoma County Public Health with contact tracing and investigation. For quarantines, uh, uh, for those who are vaccinated, students and staff that have been fully vaccinated. Are not required to quarantine as long as they do not demonstrate symptoms. And if you're unvaccinated, uh, if an unvaccinated student comes into close contact. With someone who has COVID and they were not wearing a mask, they must quarantine for at least ten days since the last exposure. The quarantine can end after day seven if a diagnostic specimen is collected after day five from the date of the last exposure. And test negative. The student must also self-monitor for symptoms daily for up to ten days from the last known exposure. And continue all of the recommendations around mask-wearing, hand-washing, and other precautions. If an unvaccinated student or staff member begins to show symptoms during the quarantine. They must immediately isolate and remove themselves from school, get tested, and contact their healthcare provider with any questions regarding their care. Modified quarantine. Modified quarantine allows students to stay in school so long as they do not develop symptoms of illness. The requirement, uh, the requirement students must meet for the modified quarantine are. Asymptomatic, continue to appropriately mask as required. Undergo at least twice weekly testing during the ten-day modified quarantine. And cannot participate in all extracurricular activities at school, including sports and activities within the community setting. Hand hygiene. Yes, SRCS will continue to teach and reinforce washing hands. Avoiding contact with one's eyes, nose, and mouth, and covering coughs and sneezes among students and staff. Additional hand washing stations have been provided to all school sites. SRCS will promote hand washing throughout the day, especially before and after eating. After using the toilet and after hand handling garbage or removing gloves. We will also ensure adequate supplies to support healthy hygiene behaviors, including soap, tissues. No-touch trash cans, face coverings, and hand sanitizer. With at least sixty percent ethyl alcohol for staff and children who can safely use hand sanitizer. For cleaning. In general, cleaning once a day is usually enough to sufficiently remove. A potential virus that may be on surfaces, and that's per the CDC. Disinfecting, using disinfectants on the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency COVID nineteen list. Removes any remaining germs on surfaces, which further reduces any risk of spreading infection. If a facility has a sick person of COVID nineteen within the last twenty-four hours. Clean and disinfect the spaces occupied by that person during that time. District and site custodial personnel will continue with routine cleaning and disinfecting the classrooms, restrooms, and other school site areas. This includes cleaning high-contact surfaces that are touched by many different people, such as handrails and doorknobs. We encourage and have supplied wipes for the wiping of desks by students between classes at secondary sites. Removing trash, cleaning restrooms, cleaning spills, and cleaning cleared countertop surfaces. Disinfecting. All classrooms, restrooms, and offices will be disinfected nightly using electrostatic sprayers. This disinfectant is recommended by the CDC and EPA for use against COVID nineteen. The disinfection form will be posted for sign-off at the completion of disinfecting. Elementary schools, classrooms and offices, classrooms and office areas. Are disinfected nightly, restrooms disinfected throughout the day, during the workday and school days. In indoor halls and entryways will be disinfected daily. Millan High School's classrooms and offices, classrooms and office areas disinfected nightly. Restrooms are disinfected throughout the day during the workday and school days. Indoor hallways and entryways will be disinfected daily. Food services. Sites will maximize distance indoors as much as possible, using the gym as an example. Use outdoors whenever possible. All students will receive free meals this school year and next school year. Students will not be asked to give an ID number in order to receive a meal. And the students with disabilities, disabilities or other healthcare needs recommendations. When implementing this guidance, schools should carefully consider how to address the legal requirements. Related to the provision of a free, appropriate public education. And requirements to reasonably accommodate disabilities, which continue to um, apply. And then refer to the CDC K-12 guidance on disabilities or other healthcare needs for additional recommendations. Now I'm going to turn it back over to Superintendent Trinell.
Thank you so much, Mike. Um, and I will um, go ahead and uh, see if there are any questions. And I'll hand it back over uh, to Board President Fong.
Uh, I would still like to go Superintendent.
Oh, sorry. I'm so sorry. Go ahead. Sorry, Rick.
Hmm, thank you. Uh, a brief update. Uh, good evening, everyone. President Fong, uh, members of the board. Uh, a couple of key points uh, that I want to uh, touch on. One is we do have enough. PPE uh, and custodial supplies for the foreseeable future. Uh, including uh, face coverings, hand sanitizer, wipes. Uh, we are still going to use the hand washing stations at sites that don't have a high quantity of classroom sinks. Uh, and we'll be monitoring that very closely through the first. Uh, first part of the school year to see how much we're using on a weekly basis. Uh, in order to uh, provide more or allocate more uh, as needed. Uh, for example, sites have masks on hand uh, for students that don't bring one or staff that don't bring one and need one. Uh, and we still have approximately eight hundred thousand uh, in our warehouse. So. Uh, we are stocked and ready to go on PPE and custodial supplies. Uh, the other thing uh, I want to touch on that comes up often is transportation. Uh, West County has published their school bus uh, schedules. At www dot school busing dot org. That information is also on our website. Uh, I will note, I did hear the comment earlier in public comment, and I will look into uh, the route on Santa Rosa Avenue. Uh, I will also note that right now West County Transportation is approximately thirty drivers down. Uh, so they've tried to schedule uh, the most efficient way they can around our district. And they will be making adjustments as needed through the first couple of weeks. Any adjustments to bell schedules will be. Uh, publicized and sent to our parents at the schools that are receiving school bus services. Uh, I'd also like to mention, the Santa Rosa City Bus has launched their unlimited rides program for uh, youth of Santa Rosa. Uh, it's an eighteen-month pilot program uh, where students TK through twelve who reside in Santa Rosa can ride the bus for free. Uh, there's a link to that on our website as well, uh, for more information about Santa Rosa City Bus. We are also, and we're going to have a uh, discussion item. Uh, after this item, but I will hit a couple of the highlights on child nutrition services. Uh, Assistant Superintendent Shepherd touched on some of the conditions of eating both inside and outside a few moments ago. Uh, and will announce again that meals are free for all students, regardless of eligibility. For the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, uh, with funding from the USDA. Uh, the state has also announced that meals will be free in twenty-two, twenty-three as well. Uh, we are still asking parents and families and guardians to complete the mail, meal application or the. Uh, income survey, uh, because as we know these uh. Uh, regardless of if the meal is free, knowing uh, that information helps with. Uh, our LCFF funding, uh, as well as other funding that directly impacts our school sites. Director Burke, in a few minutes, uh, will go over more about the details of what's happening with the food program. Uh, but we are, I, I know they've been working very hard in preparation for tomorrow. Uh, and continuing the service that they provided uh, throughout the last eighteen months during the pandemic. With providing food to our students uh, and families through this time. Another item is uh, the transition to the Ares Student Information System. Uh, following the CNS report, uh, we'll also have an update on that transition. Uh, migrating from illuminated education to uh, the Ares system over the course of the last year with. Uh, the majority work of the final transfer happening in July with Ares. Uh, and now Director Van Dyke and his team, uh, preparing the system, uh, providing uh, additional training uh, over the course of the last. Uh, ten days or so, uh, to get schedules ready and for teachers to be able to take attendance tomorrow. Um, as expected. Uh, so we'll hear more about that later tonight as well. And the last update for tonight is our COVID safety plan. Previously approved the late winter of uh, last school year. We are making updates to that. Uh, based on guidance that we're receiving, including that that we received today. Uh, we'll be capturing that in the uh, COVID safety plan. Uh, we will be setting up time for uh, public review and public comments. Uh, on that plan to be incorporated, uh, and then presented to the board for another approval. Uh, which uh, moves the process forward to continue receiving. Uh, some of the SRF funds from the federal government. So that will be coming uh, in the next couple of weeks. Um, to start that uh, process of public review and input. Uh, with that, I will turn it back over to Superintendent Trinell. Uh, thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Um, I will now turn it back over to Board President Fong.
All right, Board. This is a discussion item. Um, do you have any clarifying questions for the team? Before we go to public comment, and that would be Clerk Flores first, and then trustee Sheffield.
Um, thank you, President Fong. Um, in terms of AP one thirty, uh, is there a cap associated with that? Uh, do we have a certain amount of students that can actually request independent studies, or is it open-ended?
Great question. It is open. And right now, we have about two hundred and two. Students requesting independent studies.
Okay, so no cap, because I thought I heard. Heard like, uh, earlier, not today, but in a different discussion, that there was a cap of fifty percent, but there isn't. Thank you. That's it. That's my question. Thank you, Doctor Armstrong.
Trustee Sheffield.
Thank you. Just two questions. Um, the first one is for Deputy Superintendent Edson around um. COVID testing. So at this time, the district does not or will not conduct any testing for students. But I'm wondering even if um, students have contracted COVID on campus. Um, do we have any plans of implementing some type of testing?
Yeah, uh, absolutely. And I don't know if it would be Director Mazzara or Shepherd that would have the, the details probably in front of them. Uh, about how we're going to treat uh, classroom cases. Um, when that has occur, uh, including protocols that follow that. Uh, along with the, uh, just the general symptoms of moving students to isolation tent for parent pickup. Uh, that will still be uh, part of every campus starting tomorrow. Uh, and then, would either of you like to talk on the uh, testing protocols at that point?
Sure, Mr. Shepherd. Slip, slip in if you have any updated information. Uh, President Fong, Board, uh, Superintendent Trinell. Um, we are, we, we do have to do response testing if there's been an outbreak in a classroom. Uh, we offer it to the students, so we'll make offers at the school site, meaning we'll have a team that will come around. And offer for students to do that. As mentioned, there's a modified quarantine. So students can remain in the classroom as long as they're being tested twice a week and not showing symptoms. So in those cases, we will be coming out to the schools and we'll, we'll do that. So at an elementary where no one is. No one, none of the students are vaccinated, we would do the, let's say, the entire classroom. And we would go through that process. At the secondary level, our only obligation is to do unvaccinated students.
Right.
And so at that point, the unvaccinated students would have to go through that same process, test twice weekly. The vaccinated students that remain masked would not have to go through that, any kind of testing.
Okay. Great. Thank you. And then the second question, I'm not sure who would answer this, but um, I believe Assistant uh, Superintendent Shepherd discussed. Today's vaccine mandate from the governor, um, and mentioned that we have until October fifteenth. To comply. I'm wondering that, and I don't know what, there might be legal issues around it as well, but upon request. Are families able to be made aware if their students, um, classroom instructor is not vaccinated?
Yeah, I'll take that one. Um, Director Sheffield, uh, because of privacy laws. Uh, we cannot disclose the vaccination status of a, of an individual. However, it's very likely that we will be able to give um, sort of round numbers in general of uh. Uh, a numbers and percentages of people who are vaccinated in the district.
Okay, would we be able to do that, um, round numbers on, at individual schools as well?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
No other board member questions? I do have a Director, Del, Del Cruz, is that you?
Yes, it is. Sorry, I'm going to try to figure out how to take my hand down. Um. Thank you, uh, Director Sheffield. You asked a very good question that I had on my mind as well. I, I was also wondering with regards to distance learning, do we have a breakdown of, of who's, who's opting for distance learning and whether or not like both. Kind of race, race and ethnicity as well as um, English language learner status. So I would just be curious. What additional, if any, supports would be needed to make sure that kids who are receiving really limited instruction? Um, what, what opportunities they might be for additional, additional resources?
I want to just say one thing. I don't think we have distance learning anymore.
Independent study, I will, I will shift my language, so. If we have a breakdown of both who's chosen independent study and then. Any additional resources that might be available for kids who are looking for that.
Right, absolutely, I can answer that, so once we get the information. Into our system, Ares, our student information system, we will be able to pull those reports. And I can guarantee you with our superintendent, we definitely will be prioritizing. Supports and wraparound services for each and every one of our students.
Thank you. Clerk Flores, you have a follow up question? Okay, so he's gonna come back, he's present right now, I do have a clarifying question. Students do not need to disclose that they have been vaccinated or not vaccinated, is that correct?
President Fong, they do in contact tracing terms in this modified system. Where we have to come into a classroom and identify, they will have to in that circumstance.
Clerk Flores, you back? Okay, we will catch them on the other side. At this point, we're going to move to public comment, and Adina, you're handling public comment tonight? Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna save you for discussion, so after public comment, all right, so hang on to that. And we're gonna just try to see if any students want to have hands up first.
If any students would like to make a public comment on item E one, please raise your hand at this time. And it does not look like we have any raised hands from students. Any other members of the public, if you would like to make a comment on item E one, please raise your hand at this time. And it looks like we have a hand from Shelby Dodson.
Hi, so I have three questions to address, the first question is.
Mister Dodson, we can't hear you. Mister Dodson, we can't hear you at this time, I'm going to go ahead and lower your hand, thank you. And President Fong, we have no other hands.
And you're on mute, Lori.
Clerk Flores, you had a comment or another question?
Yeah, follow up question, what wouldn't we be able to test if. Secondary students if we had a test positive in the classroom? I think I would feel more comfortable if we if we did that, even though, you know, we have mitigating practices like masks and that, but. You know, they're in the same sort of environment for, you know, over an hour, and so I'd just like to know. You know, why wouldn't we test our students in that scenario, even though we're not mandated, but I think it would be a good policy to do that.
Director Flores, I believe that our practice, if there is someone who tests positive. The expectation is that there is weekly testing for the students for two weeks, I believe. If Mister Mizera.
What I heard, it was at the elementary, yes, at the secondary is not mandatory, so I just like to say that, you know. I would feel comfortable if it was mandatory, you know, K twelve, just because I don't think, you know. You know, if you're in the classroom with thirty other students, even though you weren't a mask, the likelihood of you being infected is pretty good. Even with a mask, I'm just, I'm just looking at, looking at for students and staff. So I just want to make sure that I have clarity on that regard.
Thank you.
Yes, Director Flores, we'll double check that option as recommendation, remember there are recommendations from CDPH, of course. We are making it available to anyone that wants to volunteer. But whether or not there is a requirement for the student to remain in school, I don't think CDPH made that, but I'll discuss with Cabinet those logistics around that.
Well, yeah, I didn't talk about quarantine, I talked about testing, you know.
Thank you.
Okay, any other board members? Superintendent Trunell, I just wanted to make this comment, I expected a lot. Sorry, is that you? Okay. Trustee Manieri.
Yeah, thank you. So I didn't want to ask this question because it's not really a question, more of a consideration for our superintendent, her cabinet and our board. I think that, you know, in Sonoma County, we have pretty high rates right now, it's. It's kind of astounding to me how we have like kind of ring an alarm on the rates and cases. I would like for us to consider a policy for wearing masks outdoors of our school buildings. Oakland has done this, San Jose has done this in light of their rising cases. So it's not a question at all, but rather for for us to consider really. Implementing so that we can have the safest return to school as possible. Because I am concerned and I want to make sure that those students who and families who might have concerns about returning to school. And have opted for in-person learning, or I'm sorry, not distance learning, independent study. That this be a policy that helps them feel safe so that they can. Whenever they make the decision, if they make the decision to return to school in the near future. And that this be something that keeps them safe and that offers them security. And I don't know if that has to be something that is brought to the board on at another meeting. Or if that's something that we can discuss at this moment, but I did want to bring that to our board.
So let's just be clear, students. Are not required to wear their masks when they're outside?
That is correct, in our return to school plan. The language specifically states that students must wear their. Face coverings may be removed during breaks during designated times and in designated areas, face coverings will not be required. While students and staff are engaged in eating or drinking, and they should, they're, they need to be worn indoors at all times. But outdoors, our policy is a bit vague.
We, may I, for President Fong, so our current guidelines follow the CDPH. And that is that masking is optional for outdoor activities. And so that is the direction we are currently headed, and we will certainly heed the advice of the board. As we can continue to refine our practices.
Thank you, yeah, I think it's. I really admire the the school districts who have been able to kind of take it that step further with safety. Just beyond CDPH's guidelines, especially in places where we know transmission is high. And so I, that is, I think, totally within our wheelhouse to discuss a policy around masking outdoors.
So Superintendent Trunell, can you note that and keep that in your discussion and bring that back to us? In terms of what discussions you've had with your team and health?
Absolutely, I will just note, Board President Fong, that, and I completely understand what. Director Manieri has just shared, we also have families as a balance. Who are very concerned about their children wearing masks for six hours or more a day. And really are feeling more. Comfortable with their children returning to school, knowing that they may have the option to take a break from the mask outdoors as well. So we will definitely continue to discuss this.
All right, so I'm gonna wrap up this discussion on item E one, and I'm just gonna say this, that I actually thought we would have a lot more questions from our public and comments and questions. And I think it might be either we're starting school tomorrow, or that you, Superintendent Trunell, handled this with the with the. Forums, the parent forums that we had, and the really, I thought, effective question and answer. And posting the video, the forums online, so the more information we have for parents to access at their own time, the better. And the more transparent, the better for them, so I think that might be it. All right, we're moving on to E two, and that is a discussion on the Ares Student Information System implementation update.
Thank you, Board President Fong, and I would like to hand that over to Deputy Superintendent Edson.
Thank you, good evening again, excuse me, President Fong, Superintendent Trunell, members of the board. Joining me tonight is Rand Van Dyke, who is the Director of Data and Assessment for the District, who is also. The lead implementer of the transition from illuminate education's student information system. To, excuse me, to Ares Student Information System. Somebody you may recall, we had just transitioned to illuminate about four years ago. Leaving a system that was not doing the job for us as a district. To the extent that we wanted it to, we made that move to eliminate. And through their best business practices, they've decided to shutter. Their student information system product. Which made, which didn't make us, it forced us to find a different solution. For Santa Rosa City Schools, and with that. We have been implementing, excuse me, Ares for the better part of a year now. And I would like to hand it over to Mister Van Dyke to go through. Where we've been, so to speak, to where we're at today in anticipation for tomorrow, so Mister Van Dyke.
Thank you, Deputy Edson, I'll get my share up here. Superintendent Trunell, President Fong, and the board. Hang on, here's Ares implementation, so we started this journey really back in the fall of two thousand nineteen, as we transitioned to. ISI, which is illuminates student information system. We did that, we made that choice after committee made a decision based on a pretty exhaustive. Set of criteria, we had several meetings around that, and we moved to Ares in June of two thousand twenty. In the spring of twenty one. We began the process of migrating. Shouldn't say again, we began the process of migrating in October of twenty, and we began training staff in the spring of two thousand twenty one. Ares is live today, Ares is ready for school tomorrow, and it's accessible by nearly all office staff for all of student information system functions. We still have a relationship with illuminate using two other products, one of them is DNA, which is their testing platform and data warehousing, as well as Edge Climber, which is a. Product that allows us to work on interventions for students more than another day. Back in the spring, we trained staff, certificated folks, we used our Wednesday PDs, we did hosted and supported. Trainings, and we ran four hundred and nine participants to the elementary portal, which is more than the number of elementary teachers we have, because we allow teachers to do it more than once if necessary. Secondary portal, we had five hundred and thirty eight participants, and we had two hundred and eighty five. Teachers go through the gradebook training, and we gave initial training for counselors to fifty five participants. So it was online with support, and they also offered self-paced online training as well, available. For all staff, for all teaching staff that were interested. We covered the major topics of how to get around in the program, how to take attendance, how to manage gradebooks, and issues around Google Classroom integration, and those items were all done. Without us actually being able to see what our live environment was going to be, so it was in a training environment, which oftentimes includes every bell and whistle possible that the software producer offers. This slide was originally going to be presented to you before we had the August ninth presentation, and so on August night. For the return to work, we had attendance and gradebook refreshers, we had how to update master schedules the first day back, and we had how to change schedules when we. When counselors returned to work as well, and in our August ninth training, we had. Approximately seven hundred unique teachers come to one of the Ares trainings. And they attended one of seventeen hundred different offerings, which meant we had teachers in there more than once. And the feedback from teachers was positive in terms of being able to feel like they were ready to go for day one. We also continue to support teachers during the next two days on Wednesday, sorry, on Tuesday, and today. We had a drop in Zoom support for a couple of hours each day, which was, I didn't get feedback on how many people attended, but I know that. The person who manned that woman that staffed that, the person who staffed that, Linda Costanas. She's our Tectosa extraordinaire, she really is able to dig in and. Figure out the problems, and she's been instrumental in making sure that gradebooks are up and ready. And help us iron out the glitches. During the school year, we will continue what we've done in the past with our Help Teacher email account, where we put out a weekly tip or tips. We try and keep them short, pointed into the point, so that teachers are able to. Kind of digest that information quickly. And leading up to events such as grading periods, we make sure those tips are appropriate for the grading period piece, so we'll be. Doing some just in time training for progress grades and quarter grades as well. And we will use opportunities during the annual service days as well to continue the training for teachers. For counselors on August second, when they returned, on the day they returned to work, we did a training which covered essentially navigation of the system. We talked about our. Course numbering change, Ares has some course numbering requirements that we had to adhere to, which meant changing our course numbers. So we went through that to give counselors a little bit of a leg up on what that looked like. And then we did guided practice with live schedule changes, so. We showed how to schedule, how to change a schedule, which is almost as easy as. Click, click, save, there's a little bit more to it when you're a counselor, and you have to make things fit into a schedule, counselors certainly appreciate that. And then we left the Zoom open for the counselors to just come in and ask questions, another two hours availability time. On Wednesdays, I hosted a drop in Zoom support for counselors and master schedulers. I think I had that set for three hours, and by three hours, there was no one left coming in, so I think that would serve its purposes. We have some upcoming areas that we will continue to support counselors in. Student notes where they go, how we use data, how we create queries, and of course, as requested, so we're working closely with that services to make sure we cover those counseling needs. But a classified staff, we did similar kinds of trainings, we opened it up to. The different groups, registration staff, which are the ESONS at the elementary level, and the registrars at secondary. Counseling secretaries as part of the secondary group, the health staff, the attendance staff. And basically, it goes the same kind of thing, it was a large overview, how do you navigate the system? All the bells and whistles unfortunately are out there, we don't need to have every trick covered, so we. Once we've gone live, we've done some additional support, so we did again the navigation. We do drop in Zoom support, and we really covered how to manage contacts, student records, health files, and attendance and depth, so that we were ready for the first day of school. We did refreshers for those groups as necessary, we've. I shouldn't say we, Linda Zabala, our student system coordinator, has held multiple Zoom support sessions, support sessions. I get calls from her at six in the morning because she started to work on something, and sometimes at eight o'clock at night because she's finishing something up, we've. Worked hard to make sure we've met all of the. All the classified staff where they're at, support their needs to make sure that our student information gets into the student information system, so students can be in class tomorrow. So we. We invited parents to the portal Sunday night that went out, and we have done some support work around that in the last several days. How do you manage the health data, taking the daily attendance is always, always a challenge. Although this year will be much easier than the last year because you're not navigating around COVID, and then just basic navigation reminders. Administration, other groups had an opportunity to be the first of our users who got to use the Google Single Sign On button. We managed to get all of the administrators in and running in the most basic sense, same thing for. running in the most basic sense. Same thing for the list of speech language psychologists, program managers, the family engagement facilitators, restorative specialists, and other district office staff. We know that we have some groups we don't have in. We are diligently working through giving that additional access as needed. We anticipate during the school year to provide training for the admin and other groups, and the same kind of a thing during job alikes, regular meetings, or potentially Zoom drop-in sessions, supporting particular areas of the system. Master scheduling is the single most important task that someone will do at a middle or a high school, and we did the bulk of our master schedule work in the familiar system of illuminate, and we migrated that over. That was part of that free week blackout period. We couldn't get into either system to do any work. The master schedulers were trained in August, on August second, Monday, their first day back, we did drop-in support during the August third time. Every bit of a student schedule now is managed for all of our districts, for all of our schools in the district. It's all managed in Ares. And moments ago, I finished turning on the portal for the parents to see their schedules in Ares, making sure that every school site's portal for the schedule was open. We covered additional master script, master schedule training as needed. It didn't matter the time of day, if we needed to squeeze something, and we worked that in, and it's been a bumpy road, but they've come, come through and really, really rolled up their sleeves as master schedulers and done an awesome job getting things ironed out. We'll continue to use the drop-in Zoom. That's been very popular and easy to do, a good way to offer someone from a site an opportunity for support. We can show them, or they can show us what they're doing. That's been really handy. Like I said earlier, all job areas are going to continue to receive ongoing training. We're going to do our just-in-time help training for teachers through teacher email and/or Zoom support sessions as necessary. We are, we've begun creating our own help tick, our own help supports in the tech hub, and later tonight, I'll be posting a support document for parents, which I'll mention here in a moment. And all staff should use the tech hub. You notice I've listed it twice here. We've got to get those tickets in the tech hub. That helps to get them to the right person. And parent portal, parent portal is always the, I think, one of the trickiest areas that we have in terms of how we support our families. This one will be no different. We will certainly have to roll up our sleeves and help folks get onto the portal. I like the fact that there's an app on either iPhone or Android for parents that helps us for those parents who don't necessarily have a full-on computer at home. We have documentation that we will continue to create in our own technology support, including the web, and our own front-facing, you don't have to log into a tech hub. We'll include things on how you activate your account, how you change settings, how you set notifications, and I believe and go so far as to create a little video on how to download, install the Ares app at this point. Not all those pieces of buzz are in place that we haven't had. I haven't heard a lot of feedback that parents are struggling to, and there are some, and they seem to be isolated cases, but we seem to be managing those well enough, and I lost my. Okay, here I am, the tech guy, and I don't have one more page. Mr. Edson, I seem to have lost the last page, which is the one that says, do you have questions?
I don't believe it was lost, Director Van Dyke. We did take that out, but with that, I will just give a lot of credit to Rand and his staff for working with personnel for district office, as well as at the sites, including teachers over the course of the last few days, knowing that it's been bumpy trying to get the last minute pieces in, and also dealing with delays and outages from areas as well. So a lot of credit there, and with that, we'll turn it over to the board for any questions.
Or questions?
I have a discussion items all week.
So we're on questions, questions, questions. Okay, no questions, and we're going to turn this over to public comment.
If you would like to make a public comment on item E two, please raise your hand. We are requesting for students to raise their hand first. And it looks like there's no hands from students. Anyone else from the general public who would like to make a comment on item E two, please raise your hand at this time. And President Fong, it looks like there are no hands.
Discussion, Clerk Flores, go ahead.
Yeah, a couple of suggestions here. So you know, it seems like we have, because a lot of people don't know this is happening, so it will happen in the near future. Coming from a school district that has used Ares in the portal for a while, it is widely used by parents quite a bit. So one of the things I would like to see is more engagement in terms of training for parents, both in English and Spanish, because I think once this tool is utilized by, by parents and students, it would generate that. So I would like to see if we can have, you know, ongoing training in the following months to make sure that we answer and help all our, you know, students and parents in terms of how to access the parent portal. Because once the story acts, and it's, it's a little bit confusing, you know, so I just, I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
I'm going to take that up and echo that. So it's ongoing, 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 and I know Director Van Dyke and Superintendent Trunell folks do that, and I know that principals are working on it, but let's just keep that in mind, that the way we engage is that we continue to engage, not a one and done, right? All right. Thank you. Thank you, Director Van Dyke. I like those flowers.
Thank you.
Andrew, welcome.
We're moving on to E three. It's a discussion on child nutrition services.
Thank you, Board President Fong, and I will hand it back over to Deputy Superintendent Edson.
Thank you. If we could bring Mr. Burke over, please. There you are. Good evening again. Tonight, we want to provide an update on the Child Nutrition Service Program as we went through last year and in preparation for the upcoming year. And with that, I will share my screen and turn it over to Mr. Burke, Director of Child Nutrition Services, to give an update. Ed, we're having a hard time hearing you.
I can't hear anything.
He's connecting to audio right now with his headset.
Excuse me. All right, thank you very much. Pardon the interruption, and the nifty headset is back in action. So thank you to that wonderful introduction, President Fong, Assistant Superintendent Trunell, and our Board Directors. I like to begin and end our presentations with notes of gratitude. So I want to start by thanking our CNS team. They came through during a pandemic. We have served over 2 million meals in a really scary time, and our team came through, and we are just so grateful and appreciative of everything that they've done for our community. And if we can go to the next slide, please. Thank you. So one of our key considerations is safety, staff safety and for students as well. And so to introduce this slide, we started introducing a really nifty resource called Wash Your Lyrics. It's a handwashing tutorial that you can use to sing and dance to your favorite song. So we found that we had some very personalized choices that really drove engagement, and washing hands became a really fun activity, which is a crux of what we do. So all of our CNS staff have had additional occupation-specific training, namely regarding food service and distribution. We have assigned our staff to work cohorts, so they're going to stay together in groups, which will help minimize exposure to each other. And cohorts are going to rotate positions and duties, take breaks as groups, so they're going to stay together. And meal counts this year, because all of our meals are free, and we're going to say this a lot, all of our meals are free this year. One more time, together, all of our meals are free. So that gives us a really unique opportunity. We do not need to use pinpads or ask for students' names. We're just going to walk through and click, click, click as the students walk by, so there will be no contact between staff and students. There's going to walk right by with their meals at the end of their pickup. So this is going to be very exciting, and it's also going to increase the amount of time that students have to eat, preferably outside or socially distanced. So this will be terrific. So, next slide, please. All righty, one of my favorite pictures. We are going to be offering, once again, free meals to everyone 18 and younger this year, and next year, all enrolled students will eat for free. So this is one of my favorite photos, because this is when we were doing bundle distributions over at Monroe Elementary. And we really cannot stress this enough, every student eats for free, regardless of your eligibility. Come on in, grab a meal, we're going to have a great day. Just come on in and eat with us. We will be offering this, this current school year because of funding from USTA, as Deputy Superintendent Edson has, has told us, and the following year because of the funding from California State, which leads us into our next most interesting and biggest ask. So Deputy Superintendent, Deputy Superintendent Edson, would you please the next slide? So we are asking everyone, even though you don't need to complete a meal application to get free meals, because everyone eats for free, we are asking that every household completes either an income survey, or if you prefer, a meal application. This is going to help us get funding for your schools. This is funding for technology. This is grant funding as well. And for your family, it will help you reduce or waive fees, such as testing fees or parks, public parks. And we really can't stress this enough, please fill one of these out. You can complete a meal, an income survey as part of the registration packet. There are two questions. It's going to be very, very simple. How many people are in your household? And please select a range of your income. You are also eligible to decline to answer if you prefer. We count that as a response, but please fill this out so that we hear from everyone. One of the challenges that we have is free and reduced price meal applications are a little bit difficult to access. They're difficult to complete, difficult to return. So by taking on income surveys as an alternative, we are hoping to get a much higher response rate and increased funding for your children's schools. So please, please, please fill out an income survey as the preferred way of doing it. It's very simple. It's convenient. You're doing the registration anyway, and it's going to be found in Ares. And for anyone who does qualify for free meals, an income survey will get you the same benefits as a meal application. So that's the increased funding for schools, the waived fees, and we really encourage you to do so. Not, not last but not least, of course, next slide, please, is, of course, we talked about our meal survey option. This is our most convenient option. So parents, please, fill this out as part of your registration packet. You may decline if you choose to, but we do want to hear from everyone, and a decline to, to respond is a response, but we would ask that you please share this information with us. And because this information is completely confidential, we will not share this with anyone. So next slide, please. The meal app option, if we're feeling like we feel more comfortable with what we're familiar with, it's also available. It is not required to receive free meals. Okay, once again, everyone eats for free. You do not need to fill out an application to eat for free. Paper meal applications are available at your school by request, or you can complete them online at family.titank12.com. That's family.titank12.com. Next slide, please. All righty, one of the best parts about either income survey or meal applications is if you qualify for free meals, you will also qualify for PEBT benefits. So please, if you haven't done so already, complete a meal in an income survey form or a meal application is if you qualify for free meals, you will also qualify for PEBT. And PEBT, for those folks who may not be aware, is a wonderful program through the California State, where if you qualify for free meals, you will get an additional supplemental payment to help you buy food for your whole family. So not only are you helping your school get funding, you're also potentially helping others get additional money for groceries that our families need in this very trying time. So please, fill out an income survey or fill out a meal application. We would love to have you. So next slide, please. All righty, so we're very excited about this coming school year. With students returning to campus, we are very excited to offer free meals for everyone. One more time with feeling, free meals for everyone. So we have pivoted to providing more meals on campus in anticipation of having more students on campus. We provide more food, and we serve a tremendous amount more students than we would otherwise. Most notably, I want to give a shout out to our friends over at the elementary schools. We serve a significant increase in the amount of students every day with the reduced amount of students on campus. This is kind of an amazing thing. Because we offered breakfast after the bell, everyone on campus was offered a breakfast regardless of their eligibility, and we served thousands more meals, a few thousand more meals in April 2021 with breakfast after the bell compared to a traditional school year in 2019. Thousands of students received breakfast that historically have not. So I want to give a really great shout out. Breakfast after the bell is my jam. It is the thing that I am most excited about for this coming school year, and it has been a tremendous hit. During the 2020-21 school year, we also offered bundles ranging from five to seven days of breakfast, lunch, suppers, and sometimes snacks. Really big, massive bags of food that we distributed on a weekly basis. And our team, like you see here, were thrilled and enthused, and it really did our hearts well to interact with our, our community members and let them know that they are part of our family and that we care about them. And that has been tremendous. So would you please go to the next slide? All righty, so the summer 2021 program, we pivoted and we expanded to the most amount of sites that we've ever been partnering with the Redwood Empire Food Bank to provide meals for summer programs, to provide bundles all across the county from Cloverdale to Petaluma to Sonoma. We were everywhere this summer. And as a result, we have had the busiest summer on record, but also we've reached a tremendous amount of people, especially as schools were coming to a close and meal programs were no longer available. Santa Rosa City Schools, in partnership with Redwood Empire Food Bank, were able to fill a need throughout the summer until schools have now are reopened. And this has helped us to achieve our goal of financial sustainability, but also in meeting the needs of our community through a very trying time. So next slide, please. All righty, so our fiscal update is we have broken even this year, which has been tremendous. We're very excited about that. And we are looking forward to pursuing our goals of financial sustainability to provide greater levels of service to the families of Santa Rosa City Schools. Next slide, please. All right, and last but not least, we want to give a big shout out to our friends over at Redwood Empire Food Bank and our partners. And lastly, our friends over at our school sites. In the coming school year, we're going to be providing a lot of individually wrapped items. We're going to be using contactless service. We're going to be serving students as quickly as possible to minimize exposures. And last but not least, we are going to excitedly welcome students back on campus to have on-campus breakfast and on-campus lunch. It's going to be very exciting, and we are working with our elementary friends to continue the great work of breakfast after the bell, and with our secondary friends to continue that wonderful process. And so we are very excited to continue with our current process. So the use of clickers is going to be very helpful. This is a really great picture of a clicker. And so as a student passes by, we're going to count them as they are. And it is hands down the fastest distribution model that we have, which we are very excited to support. So thank you very much. And next slide, please. Alrighty, so any questions, concerns, or comments?
I love those cookies, those question mark cookies, first of all. Thank you so much, Mr. Burke. Um, go ahead, Ed Sheffield.
Thank you, Director Burke. I love that we're doing this. I love that we have federal funding to do this. And and also love your enthusiasm around breakfasts at school. I just had a question and I know we do a really good job always at the start of the school year around getting these applications in and making sure that we are collecting the data needed at our schools. And so, you know, I'm I'm just wondering what we're doing.
Okay, so hold on a second, Director. Ed Burke cannot hear you. Um, Director Burke, how you doing now on hearing?
Can you hear me now? No? Okay.
So he can't hear anybody, I think.
So what I'll do is I'll phrase a question and put it in. Oh, he can hear now.
He's there.
You can hear now. Thank you. Okay, I was just giving you praise. You know, Director Burke, I was giving you praise for your enthusiasm around school breakfasts and I know that that we do this at the at the start of every school year to collect information on the applications. And I'm just wondering, are we doing anything? In addition, this year, since we are providing meals out to everybody as far as getting word out so that you can fill out the application the way other than, you know, what we're doing tonight. You know, sending, sending, you know, the the hand applications home with the kids, that type of information. What are we doing? Are we doing anything different this year, expanding this? I know how important it is to get these numbers.
Absolutely. So we have partnered with our friends at Data and Assessment to have follow-ups and meaningful interactions with parents. One of the challenges that we are cognizant of is if we're not explaining why we have a meal application, say a paper application, for example. Parents may get some mixed messaging. They're like, well, is it free? Is it not free? So we feel that the income survey as part of the registration process in Ares is going to be such a clear and distinct different process that parents are going to be able to say, I see what this is. This is part of the registration packet. It's safe. It's accessible. There's really no risk to me because I'm already registering for school. And we're hopeful that that's going to be enough. If not, we're going to be having some contests and promotional activities. If your school has a ninety percent response rate, even a decline is a response. Then we'll have a fun ice cream social. We'll have a pizza party. We'll have something where we're fired up about it. And like I said, even a decline is a response, but please fill it out all the same. Your information is confidential. It is safe and we will never share it with anyone.
Love it. Thank you so much, Ed.
Of course. Thank you.
Trustee Delacruz's question.
Yes, again, super excited about this program. As as a kid who grew up on food stamps and when you heard that like horrible call over the supermarket, like food stamps on aisle eight, this is just awesome in terms of lowering the the way folks feel eating, especially when you're poor. And I just, I really, really love this. So thank you so much, Director Burke. I'm looking on Ares right now and I'm wondering if there are more specific directions for parents to follow to be able to do this in Ares.
A great question. We will be following up with our friends at Data and Assessment to provide some more promotional materials, guidance, maybe a link. So we'll have that available shortly. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you.
Alright, seeing no other hands up, we are going to move to public comment.
If there are any students at this time that would like to make a public comment on item E three, please raise your hand. And it does not look like we have any students at this time. If any members of the general public would like to make a comment on item E three, please raise your hand at this time. And it looks like our first speaker is Shelby Dodson. Shelby, if you're there, could you please go ahead and unmute yourself? It looks like Mr. Dodson is having some technical difficulties, so I'm going to go ahead and lower his hand at this time. And we have no further hands raised.
Board members, any other comments for Director Burke? Director Burke, first of all, thank you for that really great presentation. I do actually also have a question. I actually am interested in, now that now that we're not, uh, everybody can get a free meal, can we hear in a year a contrast between the last full school year we had in person and this coming school year in person in terms of how many meals you are sending out? That would be very telling. Yes, you're nodding your head. Okay.
We'd love that. Yeah, that sounds great.
I want to thank you for in your team for your excellent work in outreach because this is the kind of work that is in our mission vision. This is the kind of work that is really addressing those barriers, those barriers for kids and 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 we all know we've all been in school and certainly when I was leading a school, it's kind of like there are kids who would go hungry because they would not go get that lunch when they were fully entitled to it. Right? Because there was a stigma, Director Delacruz talked about stigma before, and this removes it completely. And I just want to well, of course, it's the federal government who's giving us, but also you have been a genius with our resources and making something way bigger than what I think you were given. I don't I don't know how you do that. You've done an amazing job, kind of like water to wine, maybe like that, only it's alcohol. And I want our district to continue to do these kinds of really pushing the envelope innovative things. Stephanie Mary and I was talking about this a little bit earlier in something else, how we jump those barriers and break through those barriers and be the leader for our kiddos in terms of equitable access. And so this is an amazing way we're doing this. Let's continue to do that. Thank you very much. Let's see, um, one more thing I was going to say. You said, oh, you are incredibly funny with the straightest face ever. Going to say that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We are moving on to action item E four. Approval of the California School Board Association Board Policy Update for Board Policy sixty one fifty eight, which has to do with Assembly Bill one thirty for independent study.
Thank you, Board President Fong. I bring to you and the board this evening the revisions that are recommended by C S P A for Board Policy sixty one fifty eight as a result of the updates to and a part of Assembly Bill one thirty. I would like to give a little bit of context. We currently have a board policy sixty one fifty eight. However, the nuances and the changes in this new policy differentiate a a couple of different ways to approach independent study. And more importantly, the the reaction to COVID nineteen and the ability for families to choose another option for their children who may have a risk in coming back to school full-time in person. So with our current policy, in most independent study programs, it is a short-term model. Our model was between five and eighteen days maximum, five days minimum. And with the new policy, it differentiates a general independent study requirement. And then also the potential of a course-based independent study model, which I will just mention, the difference is with a general independent study model, a student would have a single teacher who would be helping to support the various subject matter as long as the teacher is credentialed. And then in the course-based model, which we are not set up, it would require an entire staff because a student would have, say, six teachers or seven teachers that would be teaching them based on those credentials and those specific courses. So again, it would require us to hire an entire staff. We have been set up for the general independent study model. Also, the independent study option that we are offering right now to families fits under the general independent study model as it also references the fifteen days or more, which many of our families are interested in partaking in. The last nuance that I will share here is that with the general independent study model, as long as a student has been engaged in independent study with us for fifteen days or more, a family member has the ability to request that a student return to their homeschool in which they will be re-registered into that school and back in and back to in-person learning. Likewise, the ability to for a parent to then at a later time request that their child be re-enrolled in independent study. And I will just share that the caveat is with this new C S B A model and board policy language, that the caveat around COVID and the ability and flexibility to enter, exit, and re-enter is for the twenty one, twenty two school year only. And I will stop here to see if the board has any questions.
I'm sure we have plenty, but go ahead, trustee Manieri.
Yeah, um, so are we going to, sorry, thank you for for that. And I do have several questions, but I'll ask this one first. So will we have to revisit this policy after the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school year to kind of update this policy so that it doesn't have that like past language around independent study?
So because the, that's a great question. So because the language is very clear about the timeframe of twenty one, twenty two, it would be assumed that after that year, there are the particular parameters around those expectations would fall away. We could at that time and we may want to watch and wait to see what happens in the future to determine if we want to make any adjustments.
Thank you. That kind of answers a couple of my questions too. And also, would, do you mind kind of pointing or is there a language in this policy that really transforms, that offers an opportunity for our students? Like, because, I mean, I just want to acknowledge that that there were some students that really thrived under distance learning and and perhaps independent studies is is something that they want to continue. So does this language also allow for that kind of outside of a a situation like COVID?
Yeah, thank you for the question. So just so that we're very clear, this option of independent study is not a mirror of what we were offering in distance learning. And just so that I can continue to articulate that, when we were in distance learning, there was the opportunity for daily instruction. And there were longer periods of time. Not only that, we offered hybrid instruction and simultaneous instruction where our teachers could have students in the classroom while having students online at the same time. So bigger groups of students and more attention to the general program. With this independent study, the thing that we are helping and want to emphasize to our families is that the program is really meant to be independent. So there's a lot more time and attention that a family member may need to give to children as they're embarking upon this learning on their own with minimal guidance from the teachers, whether it's sixty minutes a day if they're TK or KA in our case to three, or whether it's four through twelve with sixty minutes a week. So the student really should, families should really consider the self-motivation of the child and the time and attention that they'll want to spend with their child, knowing that very well that they could choose to do this option short-term for a variety of reasons.
And then my my final question for what specific, what specific supports will be offered to EL students who choose to opt into this program? Sorry, I'm just realizing that I'm kind of falling out of like the the policy, but it's a question I should have answered, I should have asked earlier. But what supports will be offered to EL students under independent study as well as for special education students?
Thank you for the question again. So staying within the conversation of the policy. The policy is meant to serve any child whose parent has an interest. And so because there are supports, and I'll speak to English learners first and I'll hand it over to Dr. Armstrong because I know that she's been working fast and furiously with her team. But legally, we have expectations for how we serve our English learners to ensure that they are building their language proficiency. And then for special education, it is not an automatic entry into independent study if a student has an I E P. The I E P team actually needs to meet first and make sure that the plan that is designed can be fully implemented in independent study before the child enters into independent study. We'll hand it over to Dr. Armstrong for any additional through the lens of the policy.
Yes, thank you.
Great. Thank you, Superintendent Tranelle. I just wanted to add in regarding the the course and the online program that we'll use. There is instruction that is via video and the accessibility features that students will be able to slow down the video of instruction or speed it up. They can have it in a different language and they can even read the transcript that and and if it's a text that they're reading, they can actually have the the text read aloud. And so built into the program are some accessibility features along with the staffing that will provide for students who need additional support as it as it fits in the board, as it fits in the board policy.
Thank you. I appreciate all of that. And I do have other questions, but I will stop now.
Other board members' questions? Director Flores.
I have a clarifying question and the board policy, could you explain the meaning of the word assignments as it pertains to to this board policy? Because, you know, I had this conversation with Anna, but I'm a little bit confused as to what it means because according to this board policy, if a student misses three assignments, they're pretty much kicked out of the program. So could you clarify the meaning of the word assignment in in terms of this board policy?
Yes, and then I'm grateful to have Mr. Zolinaro on the call, who I will tap on in just a moment. First, I want to be sure that that everyone understands that when we talk about instructional minutes in this case in the policy, that it's expected that the assignments that students are are assigned are comparable to the instructional minutes per day that a student would be in in-person learning. So teachers would be assigning assignments that would be the equivalent to the amount of time that it would take being in the class, number one. And then I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Zolinaro to talk about the missed assignments because I know the team is working through the details of how to support students.
Great, thank you. So good evening to everyone and to the Santa Rosa City Schools community. So assignments specifically are the work that students are to be completing because you do not have a typical in-person attendance in a classroom where attendance can be taken. Assignments are considered proof of the engagement and kind of presence of a student in the independent study lens. So the work that is completed and reviewed then allows the traditional independent study program to be able to receive credit for attendance of students due to that completion of work. Therefore, there's a great concern that when work is not completed, students may not be making progress. Not only with their learning, but they aren't spending time with all of the intricate pieces of learning that are important. The careful deliberation, the reflection on concepts, the application of skills and knowledge. And so that can lead then to a concern that a student isn't gaining the richness that we want them to receive. And independent study usually says that is not a good setting then for the student. We don't want them to be. And independent study usually says that is not a good setting then for the student. We don't want them to be. Um, kind of making very little to no progress. So assignments are specifically those things that students complete to show that they're engaged in the learning. And it's the way that we can also turn in attendance credit and we can be seen as having students attend.
So so just to clarify this, because it's it's a little bit, you know, um, convoluted. Um, if uh we have a student taking, you know, course-based uh courses, I mean, which the board policy goes into, you know, great detail as to what those are. And they miss and it says that if they miss three consecutive assignments that the student is uh. Will be returning to their school of choice, right, or their school or their homeschool. Um. Okay, so I mean, I I'm gonna go in tandem to what Director Manieri said. I mean, what sort of support systems do we have, you know, systemically in place to scaffold? You know, the uh the the student's progress to make sure that every student, you know, IP students, English language learners and and any any other student. Is able to not fall behind because that seems like a very low threshold, right? Three assignments and boom, you're back into the classroom, right? So I just want to make sure that as a board, we have the idea or 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 the right scaffolding to make sure that. You know, we're not setting uh, you know, a great number of students who are elected to go into independent studies to fail. So I I like to hear what we have in place.
I'll start and then I'll hand it over to Dr. Armstrong and and um Mr. Zolinaro if needed. So the first thing that is also mentioned in this in this policy that was also a part of our former policy is the agreement. So we may actually have students starting right away, but within thirty days of the first day of school. A meeting has to occur to discuss the agreement around what the student is going to be accomplishing. And through that conversation, it will certainly be discussed. Uh, sort of the motivation and the expectations uh upon the student and the family to ensure that they are successful. At that time, there will be discussions around the supports necessary for the child, um, whatever that the case may be. And I'll hand it over to Dr. Armstrong for additional information around the supports that are being designed.
Yeah, thank you Superintendent Tranel. Uh, all great questions. Uh, what I will say is. Uh, out of its services, under the direction of our superintendent, we're prioritizing a um content or courseware that is accessible. Um, to students at a variety of levels, so. Um, that whether it's a student that has some academic needs to someone who is accessing. Um. Rigorous coursework and are are excelling in that area. So that's first and foremost. And then I think the second thing. That has been our priority is making sure that we're designing supports around that so. That we have a a model that A is responsive to the needs of the student. And that A, we're able to to track and then provide support. And be ready to return that student back to their homeschool when that time comes. We realize that we may have students that are in independent study for the duration of the year. Or, you know, maybe for the next several weeks and we want, whether they're in there for several weeks or if they're in there for the entire year. Their experience to be of quality. Um, so specifically with support. Um, I guess I would immediately say that we have our um our teacher that is identified with a a caseload of students that is appropriate for monitoring. Um, and can follow up. Um, we're designing the way that that synchronized um time will be so that it includes monitoring. Feedback and connections to home with the family. Um, and and then checking with students. I think as you all heard, our superintendent prioritizes mental health wellness. And wellness. And so that's a component that we want um all of our students to have access to.
So um, one last thing, maybe um, I I like to say, you know, a report as to, you know, how our students in the pens in in emphasis are doing, you know, and and the attrition rate. Of our of independent studies, um, just to make sure that. Uh, you know, we're, you know, we're doing right by our students. So uh. But I appreciate your 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 answers and 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 your hard work and your thorough, very thorough presentation. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions and um this is also for the future. So the same way I asked for a child nutrition report like. Pre and post. So the last full school year. Uh, Director. Uh, Zolinaro, last full school year, who was in independent study? And then this school year, who's an independent study, even though these independent studies are really not the same. It's like apples and oranges. Um, but I'm I'm interested in that. And then last question. Who creates the assignments? The independent study teacher or do they go to the classroom teacher and ask for those assignments?
We, oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Oh, no, I was just gonna say that that's through our online provider. Um, so we'll we'll have an online provider for our students in K six. And then another online provider for students seven through twelve, and they design all the the course. Um. Courses and uh curriculum that students will have access to. And specifically, the reason going with the edgenuity, uh, the online provider for seven through twelve is. So that our students can have a wide range of options. So if you think traditionally to students who. Would either A need credit retrieval in a particular course or a student needed to add a course. Um, that they couldn't fit in their schedule or wanted to jump ahead, right? So a student looking for calculus or trigonometry or geometry or English nine. Um, that those are all the courses that soon they'll have available. Um, so that as a student coming out of one of the um, the the grades or schools. Um, we're able to match the courses that uh that they currently have. And so we needed to go with a provider that had a wide range of courses um in curriculum that um meets A through G as well. So.
Would you know if, is it ongenuity? Is that you you named it?
Edgenuity.
Edgenuity?
Yes.
Is that a, is that a nonprofit or a for-profit company?
That's a great question. I can't answer that with a hundred percent uh confidence. I know that it's a. A company I've worked with in in several different districts and they have a a their. Uh, a premier provider in the state of California and their courses are A through G. They do have non-A through G courses. Um, and they also have A through G courses. Um, and they also have um different add-ons that can provide tutoring and support to to students. Um, and some booster courses as as well.
Um, Board President Fong, they are a for-profit. Uh, organization. Most of these organizations are, we currently have a partnership with Acelis. That has been the program that we have been previously using and will continue to use for our high school program. It's also the program that we've been using for credit recovery.
Edgenuity?
No, Acelis.
Acelis, okay, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, um, let's move to public comment right now.
If you would like to make a public type comment on item E four, please raise your hand at this time. We will be initially taking comments from students. And it doesn't look like we have any hands for students raised. If anyone else from the general public would like to make a comment, please raise your hand for item E four at this time. And President Fong, there are no hands raised.
Board members, board members, any other um comments you'd like to make on this item? Am I seeing no hands? Okay, right.
Yeah, there's Jill and I.
All right, let's call on uh Director McCormick.
Um, I was just going to make a motion that we um approve E for the approval of CSBA. Board policy update for BP six-one-five-eight.
Second. Uh, so. Moved by Jim McCormick and seconded by uh Director Daily Cruz. And uh Director Flores, did you have another comment?
No, I was just going to move the motion. Thank you.
All right. So before we take that vote, I'm going to uh actually unleash on this one, to tell you the truth. So get ready, you guys. I want to thank our administrators for hanging in there with this change. It is something that has been dumped on you. I'm gonna use word dump because it is a new program and legislators are creating education. And I don't know how many teachers they've asked about this program, but I doubt very many. And uh, as an educator myself for my entire career, this is an insane policy. It's just insane. We are outsourcing our education for our kids. And we are not controlling it um short of choosing the provider. And it's a for-profit provider. And many, many districts are doing this and they're forced, they're forced to do this. Um. Because of this very short-sighted, actually emergency independent study. Okay, so. For whatever reason, they decided not to continue with distance learning. So we have, we have a family and and children, families. Who are afraid to come to school. And so the only option for them is independent study. Independent study is for independent learners. Just because you're afraid to come to school because of COVID doesn't mean that you're an independent learner. And we also know that many, many kids fell off the map during distance learning. And so I applaud our team for doing their very best. And I think things will change as we keep making this path by walking it, but I urge you, I I am going to look for. Your leadership and how we provide for our marginalized students. And these are also students who just do not do well in school. Um. So they can do well in school. I don't see this as a step in the right direction, frankly, but it is something that has been mandated by our state, our legislators. And we are doing your very best and I I thank you for that. But continue to put your your very best thinking about this. We trust you, our board trusts you to do this, but the policy is. If we're looking back at back at our mission and vision, it is about equitable access. I don't see this as equitable access. I'll stop. I could go on. I will stop. Thank you, team. Thank you, Dr. Armstrong. Thank you, Superintendent Tranel. And uh Director Zolinaro, but that is. I think I'll keep it down to one grant tonight. Okay, so we are going to take a vote on this. Adina?
Director Beard.
I'm gonna take this um whole meeting, this first one, just to observe.
So you're gonna abstain?
Abstain, sorry.
Thank you. Uh, Director McCormick.
Hi.
Director De La Cruz.
Hi.
Director Manieri.
Hi.
Director Sheffield.
Hi.
Director Flores.
Hi.
President Fong.
Hi, thank you. Moving on to E five is an action item, a proven approval of the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two forty-five day budget revision.
Thank you, Board President Fong, and I will uh ask Deputy Superintendent Epsom to come forward.
If we can move Joel Dante silver, please. Uh, good evening again, uh President Fong, members of the board, Superintendent Tranel. Uh, tonight, as required by state law, we are bringing the forty-five day budget revision. Uh. Both Joel and I will speak to this and I believe if he hasn't, he will be sharing his screen momentarily. Thank you. Uh, next slide, please, Joel. Uh, tonight, we'll give an overview of Fund Zero One and Charter Fund Zero Six through Zero Nine. Uh, some other fund updates that we have received. Uh, after the 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 signing of the California budget and then the. Uh, omnibus omnibus trailer bill passing as well. Uh, Joel, speak about impacts on subsequent years and then we'll talk briefly about next steps. Next slide, please, Joel. Uh. Very familiar slide. We keep moving around the circle on an annual basis. Uh, we are at budget revision within the forty-five day window. Uh, with legislature approval and then the signing by Governor Newsom. Uh, we are also right now busy preparing uh through the closing of our twenty-twenty-one school year. Uh, our unaudited actuals that will be presented at the first board meeting in September. Uh, where we will also bring any additional information that we derive from legislative actions. Uh, tied to the budget where uh some things are still being figured out. Um, hard to believe, I know. Uh. We will uh bring that in then as we go through the fall, uh, prepare for first interim report. Uh, eagerly anticipating uh the governor's January budget. Uh, it seems far away, but we know it's going to come quick with the start of school tomorrow. Uh. The months seem to fly by and we will be back at a board meeting in December discussing first interim. Uh, along with the project stabilization measures that will be brought forward through the superintendent's office. Uh, through the work that uh multiple entities do within our district, including the Budget Advisory Committee. Uh, our school sites and district office personnel. Next slide, please. Uh, this is just uh an overview of oh, the requirement of the forty-five day budget update. Uh, I will not read these, uh, but this uh approval of this item with the noted. Uh, budget updates uh does sufficiently uh meet the requirements uh of the law. With that, I will turn it over to Executive Director Dante's. Uh, to go through the significant changes um. That have been presented to us as part of uh the update that we're presenting to you.
Thank you, Rick. President Fong, Superintendent Tranel, members of the board. Thank you for having me tonight. Um. I'm gonna start with going over the, uh, I mean, I'm I'm gonna present on the updates that the um. Budget Act had on the state budget um. Since our budget adoption in June, that we based our assumptions on uh the governor's May revision. The governor comes out with his uh proposal in January. He updates his proposal in May with his mayor vision. We adopt our budget in June. The state also adopts their budget in June. Um, and then any updates that. Changes our budget, we have to report within forty-five days. So. For this presentation tonight, I'm I'm gonna give a brief history. Of the uh local control funding formula because that's the first item we're gonna. Um, look into here that is included in the budget update. And if you have any questions or. Want to any more clarification, just interrupt me, but. Uh, so prior to the LCFF was the revenue limit system with categorical programs. A huge chunk of state funding was divided into highly restrictive and somewhat narrowly focused category, quite categorical programs. The system had been frequently modified by lawsuit settlements and legislation. That it had become so hard to understand for even experts. Funding differences between districts didn't always make sense. In two thousand thirteen, Governor Brown unveiled what is now called the Local Control Funding Formula. Which breaks school funding into two broad categories. A basic grant for each student. And a pair of grants for high-needs students, those in poverty, English learners and foster children. These are the supplemental and concentration grants. Instead of following prescribed rules for spending funds allocated by dozens of individual categories. Districts need only show their investments with increased or improved services. For all students, for high-needs students in their local control accountability, local control accountability plan or LCAP. So just a quick overview of the the local control funding formula. So as you can see here, our base. Grant. Is um updated each year by the state's COLA, the the. The uh cost of living adjustment. So you can see in May. We had an assumption of a five-point-oh-seven mega COLA. And with the twenty-twenty or twenty-one, twenty-two enacted budget. That same five-point-oh-seven mega COLA was adopted. So there was no change to our budget. In that, in that um. Area of the local control funding formula. Then the supplemental grant, again, there was a twenty percent projection in May. With the uh June Budget Act, it maintained that twenty percent, so. There was no change to that. Now, the concentration grant is a increased grant. That is added to the supplemental grant if. The student population for those high-needs students. Again, the poverty, English learners and foster youth in any specific district is above fifty-five percent. You get an additional concentration grant. Now, our elementary district is, does fall into that fifty, above that fifty-five percent threshold. So we do get a concentration grant. Along with uh the CCLA charter school. No other school or charter. No other school or charter that we have, including our high school district. Falls above that 55%. So the concentration grant is not. Received by those districts. So at May revision. The projected concentration grant was 50%. With the Budget Act, the concentration grant was up, up, was a. Increased to 65%. Now, the additional 15% was to be used to increase the number of credential and our classified staff. Provide direct services to pupils. It'll be measured by comparing prior year staff to pupil ratio. So you can see that's a 780 projected estimated $786,000. Increase to elementary district and a little over 200,000 to. CCLA charter that we're gonna implement and. And including the budget and that, and more on that will be included at the first interim as we determine spending for this, these revenues. Then as we move on. Another additional item that was included in the state budget was, if you recall, in 2020-21, so this is. From last year's LCFF. The budget included the revenue deferrals. That was the state's answer to solving their fiscal problem by putting it kind of. On the school districts, they were still receiving the same amount of revenue, but they were just creating those transactions in the fall so they could. Manage their books. Now, if you recall, we were gonna have, in May, we were gonna have those go through November. This budget has said, we're gonna give you all that revenue in August. So that'll help with cash flow needs and. It's not gonna have a significant impact on our budget as we use. You know, borrow from other funds to manage our cash flow, but it will help us and we will have some more with some, some, you know. Help that'll reflect in the first interim that we bring the board in December. So another item in the budget, you know, we've been talking about it. Certainly appreciate everything that's been said about it, and it's the. Independent study requirements that were budget passed with the budget. Now, what, how that affects the budget is we have. Budgeted LCF revenues for our students, all our enrolled students based on average daily attendance, ADA. So. Come first interim, we'll have updates on how the independent study act has, will, you know, impact our budget. But really. For LCF revenue purposes, we just, so we had all our independent study. ADA included in the original budget. We also add all our other enrolled students. So we just need to maintain. The new requirements in order to. So jet, we need to generate a day of attendance for them and independent study by meeting those requirements. And Dr. Armstrong, she went over the requirements that I have here, and I think that we're moving in that. Direction, we'll, we'll achieve that. So then we move on to the other, another significant state budget item, which is special education funding. Now, we are a member of the Sonoma Sopa. So, you know, the budget comes out with all the information. That it's gonna cost, or that the state is gonna budget overall for all the other, all the school districts, you know, their. Line items, and then each district kind of has to break down, and there's a problem to see what, how that affects their district. So. The Budget Act, I mean, I'm sorry, we, you know. Our special education funding for the state of California. It comes through our Sopa, Sonoma, our Sonoma Sopa. So they'll get these new rates and they'll update our revenue projections that they give us each year. Now, just in the governor's May revision, it was about $625 per ADA that has increased to $715 per ADA. And. You self is with the funding rate of about 715, we'll get the 4.05% COL as well, but. I'm not totally sure what our separate is. We get those from them and we plug them into our, our budgets as a lump sum. So when we get them. We'll report that in person room, but that's, that's good news. Always good to get an increase for special education funding. There was a special education early intervention preschool grant that was included in the, adopted in the budget deck. We did have enough information in the may revise, so we did include. A budget for that. So I don't have an update for that, but it's about 1500, 5900 per first grade pupil in special education fall one cents ADA. I think we budgeted like right around $900,000 for that. Again, then there were a couple of new items in the budget. One is a special education low incentive disabilities funding. Again. It's a voluntary alternative dispute resolution, one-time funds allocated to Sopas. However, Sopas have to. Redirect 80% of that to the districts, and we figure about $125 per special education students. According to an estimate that we use from the School Service California, there are association that really helps with our finances, break down these finances for the school districts. So that's exciting news. And then we have another special education item, which is one-time funding for COVID-19 learning loss recovery. Learning, learning recovery support, one-time funds to Sopas again. So. We determine it's gonna be about $564 per our special ed student. But we'll get those revenues from the Sopa and we will update that with the first interim. Okay, so now. We've covered the local control funding formula. Special education funding. Now, I'm gonna touch on the first two items on this slide. Unrestricted lottery and restricted lottery. Those were two propositions passed by the state where a certain amount of the lottery revenues. Are passed on to school districts. We have unrestricted lottery rate and restricted lottery. Restricted lottery is to be. Spent for instructional materials. I think we have a portage gen item that we're gonna invest these lottery. For some science books here tonight, but. Welcome news in that arrow, the, the rate in the May revision was $150 for the unrestricted lottery. That has increased to 163. You can see each of our districts and the charter schools benefit from that. Again, restricted lottery rate increased from assume 49 to $65 for the. Restricted lottery rate. So we increase there. Yeah, forgive me, sometimes I forget you can't see my mouse, and I think you see what I'm pointing at. But only I can see that. So. That's the first two line items here. Now, in retrospect, I would have maybe broken those out separately because I'm about to go into. The next three line items here. These are three grants that, that came in the state budget this year. And. Again, we, we utilize School Service California, which is an association that. Helps school districts with a complex funding, state funding and breaks down into help us implement in our district and. The A through G comp completion improvement grant, the California pre-kindergarten planning and implementation grant. And the expanded learning opportunities grant. Now, before I go into these, I want to just read the article that. Just an excerpt out of the article that helped us. Identify these grants in the budget. It says the 2001, this is, this is, I'm gonna read this from the School Service California. To 2021-22 state budget includes major investments in special K through 12 programs. In addition to increased funding for standing investments, such as the local control funding formula and special education programs. So we have observed that as we move further from the original enactment of the LCFF in 2013. These annual investments are becoming more prevalent, harking back to the days of the maze of categorical funding. So you're gonna see. Over the last years, we've had, you know, standing investment reports on the budgets and local control funding formula. Now, the pandemic made it a little confusing because during the coronavirus, we got a number of COVID-19 pandemic. Pandemic funding grants, but those were identified. So these are now grants, including the state budget. And. So you can see we're getting healthy for A through G completion improvement grant. This was. For school districts that had less than a 67% A through G completion. We, they were then given this grant on a pupil basis, and our high school district is, is estimated to give about. $1.3 million in that grant. So then there was the California pre-kindergarten planning and implementation grant. Again, you can see what our, our districts are estimated to get for this grant. And then our expanded learning opportunities grant. This grant is different than the ABC 86 expanded learning opportunities grant. I don't know if. Everybody remembers, we just passed the expanded learning opportunities grant with, with a cup, with our plan and a couple of different grants, but this is different. So those three grants are included in the, in the budget, and we're gonna. Implement those into our instructional programs and. Have more information on these with the first interim update.
And I'll get, I'll add to that, especially on the A through G completion improvement grant with. Director Dante said is absolutely true. It's targeted at school districts that have a below 67% rate for A through G completion. We do have to bring a plan for implementation back to the board. I think it's January 31st, or I had it somewhere in my notes. Yeah, prior to January 1 of 2022, and then a report to the state. By December 31st, 2023, on how these funds were expended. In support of increasing graduation rates with A through G completion, including but not limiting to providing additional professional development. Excuse me, more supports, including tutoring, expanding access to A through G coursework. And fees for AP tests and ID programs as well. So we will, as an organization, continue to work on this. With that services and bring back that plan prior to January 1, 2022.
Yes, thank you, Rick. Okay, so then we're moving into some. Standing investments. Well, that, that actually, there's an educator effectiveness block grant that also came into this. Budget. Now, you recall back in 2015-16, we did get educator effectiveness block grant as well. And we're still determining the revenue we'll get for this grant. But if it's something like the 2015-16 budget, it was about 1466 per certificated staff FTE. So then again, everybody's familiar with our after-school education and safety ACES program. They did update that rate. We subcontract that out to Boys and Girls Club, so we will see how that. Affects our budget, and we'll have more information with that in the first interim report. Again, ongoing increase to career technical education CTE funding, which is always good news. We're gonna. Update those revenues based on the budget and have. Information on the budget update with first interim for that as well. Another thing that the Budget Act did is it recognized that there were. Fairly significant increases to our expenditures with some of the COVID-19 pandemic grant funding. And. As a part of our budget, we're required to. Contribute 3% of our total expenditures into our. Restricted maintenance account. And. They recognize that that's with these, I mean, you, there, I think we have budgeted $45 million. I don't know if that's all S or two and three, but it's like a significant amount of that. Would, you know, have an impact on that. So they've excluded those out of 3%, and now we're looking at. So our budget currently shows us spending that. In 2022-23, but like we said, we're. We're working on expenditure plan for that, and we will see. Those expenses spread out over the three years, this year, next year, and the third year. So, but over the three years, we'll see about. A 395,000 in elementary and a 570,000 in. The high school district. So that's a fairly. That's helpful for our, our bottom line. So that is all of the. Areas the Budget Act has impacted our revenues, and we've. Combed through everything, read all the associations, information, looked, you know, we're gotten good information from SCO. We can't think of anything that's omitted, but if there is anything we find that's omitted, we will certainly have a, another. Update in with the first interim to identify those, but. That should be everything. So the other area is what did the governor's budget do to our expenditures? So. The stirs, purrs, increases stayed the same from May revision, so we didn't see any changes to those expenditures. One. One good. Part of the Budget Act, which was, which was good news was. Our unemployment insurance rate. When the Budget Act. The May review, I mean, sorry, when May revision came out, they up to, we've been seeing, so. For years, we're seeing a half percent unemployment insurance. Just now this year in May, the governor came out and said, well, we're the. Projection for unemployment insurance is going up to 1.23%. You know, that's tough to hear from January to May. Well, then from May to June, it went back down to half percent. So you see, we're gonna update our budget with first interim to reduce our expenses because of that. Update with the budget by roughly these figures. And the good thing is, this is, this is. In the budget year, you'll see those pass on to the two subsequent years as well. So then there are some other funds. We have our Fund 12. That's our Child Development Fund. We have a contract with the state of California. To provide families that qualify through their income to provide their children with. Preschool. So that reimbursement rates were established shall be increased by the 4.05% COL. We do. Subcontract that out to. A number of North Bay Children's Center, and we don't actually have. Staff in-house that. Overseas, I don't think we do, but maybe we'll, but we'll, we'll budget, we'll look at that budget and implement that. Revenue increase across that program. Again, Fund 13 Cafeteria Fund, ongoing Prop 98. reimbursement of school meals, that increase. There's another pleasant or well-received item in the budget. Wait, I wanna go back. There was a, the Cafeteria Fund 13 Kitchen Infrastructure Upgrades Grant, receive a base allocation of $25,000 and. And then will the remaining funds after every district receives 25,000, they'll divvy up the rest. And they'll be provided LEAs with at least 50% students eligible for reduced meals. So we'll see that grant, and we'll have more information on how we'll spend that with the first interim. And then there's also a, for Fund 13, a training school cafeteria staff based on the number of classified employees. Minimum allocation $2,000. So, and then there is in the budget. Some school facilities fund for preschool TK and full-day kindergarten facilities grant programs that we'll look to see if we can utilize. So it blacks on subsequent fiscal years. Implementation of universal transitional kindergarten TK. So right now, we have a TK program. They qualify based on their age, so we allow the students to come in, and we don't necessarily generate ADA. We allow the students to come in and we don't necessarily generate ADA for them because we can't report them until they're. Over five. Or if they hit five during a certain time in the year. If they don't do that, then we. Then we uh don't receive revenue for them, although we give them that instruction and there's. Um. So beginning in two thousand twenty two, 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 two thousand twenty two, twenty three, they're gonna expand the eligibility by two months. Until all four year olds are offered TK. So that's, I think that's exciting. Um. Moving in the right direction. There's another thing in the the reserve cap. We haven't talked much about this because our reserves aren't. Above ten percent yet, but. The reserve cap, so. The governor has had a rainy day. Rick, you want to talk about this a little bit?
Yeah, uh, in in the interest of time, uh, as Director Dante said, uh, our our reserves aren't flirting with with this number yet. Uh, but with the increase in funding. Uh, the governor and the legislature wants to ensure that we're also spending this money on the appropriate. Um. Items in that we're just not holding money in reserve. Uh, where this would enact that ten percent cap on local reserve, so. Uh. Our intent is to spend this money what it was a portion for. Uh, and including uh the all of the items that Joel just mentioned. Uh, as well as still continuing to uh change our educational program and ramp up services for all of our students, so. Uh, this is a trigger in there that we will be cognizant of. Uh, but we don't expect that this will. Uh, necessarily be triggered in Santa Rosa schools.
Right. Thank you. Okay. And then the other item is universal meals. LAAs will be required to provide two school meals during each school day. To any people who request a meal free of charge regardless of the student's eligibility federally funded free reduced meal prices. Limited to one meal per each meal service. So those are some fairly. Um. Impacts on subsequent fiscal years, so that is. Everything that. Was included in the state budget that we found in any type of occasion that was found in the in the Budget Act that came out and. With that, um. Next step. So as we know, this August, we'll be performing our Budget Advisory Committee Fiscal Stabilization Plan. This uh. Budget Act passing will have a help in that, so we'll update our projections. And uh kind of re-target our needs. And uh then look at those needs with the Budget Advisory Committee. Um, again, we have our COVID nineteen pandemic stimulus funding. Um, you know, we have target revenues that we're gonna have to. Budget those expenditures that we'll be doing this fall or this this the rest of the summer and this fall. Um, then again, like. Rick mentioned, we'll be coming back in. Just a little while here, uh, the. Beginning September with the two thousand twenty twenty one odd unauthorized actuals. Those will see where we um. Ended our year last year uh with the budget we had estimated actuals, so we'll see. What what our new beginning balance for this year actually is. Continue work with Budget Advisory Committee. Um, in October, we'll update our enrollment projections when we have our. Actual enrollment numbers uh per the census day. Again, in November, continue to work on a budget recommend or in November, we'll bring. The Budget Advisor Committee work to the superintendent, the recommendations. And we'll submit those to the board. And then in December. We'll um. Bring our first interim report. With um a complete budget update. Questions?
Well, I I'd like to add a couple of comments before we hand it back over to the the board. Um, a a lot of information tonight, and there's still a lot of moving pieces with. The enactment of the state budget for twenty one, twenty two. Uh, we will continue as as Director Dante said to monitor. Uh, and when information becomes clearer to us, especially regarding allocations. Uh, we will bring information back to the board that may. Uh, positively or negatively impact our budget based on everyone's best guess with the legislature. Intent was. Uh, we're seeing that in other areas, right? Not just budget, but ISP, we're seeing it in COVID guidance from CDPH. Um, where things are changing uh still rapidly. Uh, and new definitions come out frequently. Uh, so we are cognizant of that. I'll also add. Uh, Joel mentioned updated enrollment projections uh in the fall. Um, that's for the twenty two, twenty three school year when we're going to try and. Uh, get those out uh much earlier than normal this year, uh knowing the impacts that our budget. Had uh over the course of the last year. Uh, and really tomorrow is a big day for us budget wise. Uh, when we actually see how many students show up and sit in a seat tomorrow. Uh, I can share uh right now, we're about seventy below projection based on. Uh, the best information I have at this point, as some registrations are still being processed. Um, some are still showing up for the first time. We had a number of those today. We'll have a number more tomorrow. Uh, and the next day. Uh, so we will start monitoring attendance on a daily basis. Uh, but at this point, I'm certainly happy that we're within seventy students of projection across K twelve and charters. Uh, which is roughly about a three hundred student increase. From our last board meeting in June. Uh, one thing we don't know yet, and and I will make everyone aware, is we don't know how many kids are not going to show up. Uh. They may not have told us yet that they're leaving. They may not even know that they're leaving. Uh, or may be in process of transit to somewhere else where. Uh, cumulative records have not been requested. As they're going through a registration process in another. Uh, school district, city, town, state, or country at this point. Uh, so when we come back in. Uh. Uh, September for sure, we'll have a better idea of where we're at. Uh, with enrollment uh leading up to uh day to day or census day. Seabeds Day, uh, also synonymous terms for the first Wednesday in October. When our official enrollment is set for the twenty one, twenty two school year. Um. So I I will just say, you know, be on the lookout for that information as we. Bring that forward as we tie that into current year funding and and future year funding. Uh, based on all of this information. Um. Uh, and with that, I will turn it back over to President Fong and the board uh for questions.
Thank you very much. Board. Questions? Speak up. I can't see you all. Can we just move that slide?
Do you want me to stop sharing?
I'm sharing, please.
Thank you. Okay, I see no hands up. We're gonna move to public comment.
If you would like to make a public comment on item E five at this time. Or sorry, um, yes, E five, please raise your hand and we will be taking students first. And it looks like there are no students' hands raised. If anyone from the general public would like to make a comment at this time, please raise your hand. And President Fong, it looks like there are no hands raised at this time.
Board, any discussion?
Well.
Action item?
I I'd just like to say thank you. I mean, it was a very thorough presentation and I had lots of questions that you answered in this, and I know it's it's pretty dense uh sort of stuff, but it's this is very important material that as a school board would take very seriously. So I just want to say thank you um for your thorough presentation.
You.
Like to entertain a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to move to approve the uh twenty twenty one forty day uh budget revision.
Second. All right, that was moved by Director Floris and seconded by Director um. McCormick. Can we have that vote, please?
Director Beard.
She she needed to leave for uh school tomorrow.
Thank you. Uh, Director Flores.
Uh, yes. I mean, yay, sorry.
Director McCormick.
I.
Director Manieri.
I.
Director De La Cruz.
I.
Director Sheffield.
I.
Uh, President Fong.
I, thank you very much. All right, moving on, item E six, action, emergency resolution, delegating authority to the superintendent to take necessary action to protect students and staff from the spread. COVID nineteen.
Thank you, Board President Fong, members of the board and the public. I bring before to you tonight, um, emergency resolution number twenty twenty one, twenty two dash zero six. Declaring emergency conditions exist at Santa Rosa City Schools. An authorization to take any and all necessary actions to prepare and respond effectively to the coronavirus. Um, as we have seen even today and current uh accord. Um, we could probably continue to add to this resolution. Um, the action of today by our governor and by the CD, um, the California Department of Public Health. Um, things are constantly changing. And this emergency resolution allows the opportunity for me to make decisions. Uh, that may be immediately necessary before a board meeting, for example, may occur. And with that, I'll hand it back over to you, Board President Fong.
Team, questions? I'd like to propose an amendment to this resolution to include what was announced today. Can we do that, Superintendent Chino?
Yes, you may.
Okay, I'm gonna give you a little bit of text for that and board. So to think uh. Add one more whereas. Whereas all teachers and school staff are now required to be vaccinated. Or tested weekly for COVID nineteen, per Governor Newsom announced and effective on August eleventh, twenty twenty one. It was today, right? Deadline for compliance, October fifteen, twenty twenty one, and then we move on. So that would be the last whereas. So just um updates, so it's current.
Um, and I don't know if this is another addition to this, but um is there a a timeframe for this uh resolution uh or a sunsetting time?
There is not.
So, because I know districts had something similarly passed uh last year, and this is, you know, I. The follow up. So it's open ended or or until the pandemic is over or until we're not under emergency um. Uh, COVID, you know, uh, protocols. So I just, I just, you know.
Yeah. That's a really good point, Director Flores. I'm wondering, because I was also looking for the past. Emergency resolution, just to make sure that we're tracking language and. If that resolution is still in effect.
Right.
And if we have to. Do something with that resolution to. I either modify or to frame it within. This resolution. Because typically typically in like in the county where the. The CIO is is the officer that's delegated kind of emergency powers. That that the resolution is usually tied to the declaration of public emergency. Um, and I don't see that here.
Right, same here, yeah.
If I can add, uh, my understanding is that the reason why we're bringing this forward is that there was a change of hands. In the superintendent. So in the previous resolution, you were giving Dr. Kitamura. The authority to make the necessary and take necessary action. And because the hands have changed, that would be bringing it back to make it current with under the new superintendent.
I don't recall there was an end date, um, but this says. Spreading coronavirus. Can we go back to that amendment that I suggested to include the most current thing from um Governor Newsom?
And then. I, because this doesn't delegate to a specific superintendent, it's just the superintendent. My understanding is it would be applicable to whatever whoever is the superintendent. As you know, as the person who holds that office. That makes sense.
So I guess the question is, is this necessary? I mean, I think I think what President Fong is trying to add here is it's something that we should add. Uh, and and I think I will feel comfortable if we add something else uh saying that, you know, this this resolution will end. As soon as the emergency uh state uh the state emergency, it's it's done, right? But yeah. Or this by the governor. But I don't have the right language for that.
Is that inherent in the title, though, Director Flores?
Seems implied.
To me, it seems implied. It seems inherent.
Okay, so the only change we're doing here then is uh your addition. And uh, we don't necessarily need something like this because it's it's for the superintendent. Not necessarily a specific superintendent.
Okay, I just didn't understand what you said. We don't need this because it's for no specifics.
It it sounds like the only change that we're adding to this um resolution is your your language, uh, and uh I'm okay with with that. I I just don't think we need it in in terms of uh for a new superintendent because uh it's it's that specified. As to, you know, which superintendent had the uh. The emergency powers, right? So.
I believe the old one specified Diane tomorrow.
Okay, but this one doesn't.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, so I'd like. Go ahead.
Just real quick, and I and and even even if it doesn't specify uh Diane, I think that we could reaffirm it with the new superintendent. I mean, that's. Uh, you know, I I I I think having her be a part of this. Um, be present while we are adopting this resolution, being in her seat and her position. Has some weight to it. So I, you know, I'm 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 supporting it with the amendment, Lori. This one put that out there.
We need to. Okay, we need to go to public comment.
If you would like to make a public comment on item E six at this time, please raise your hand, and we will be allowing students to speak first. And it doesn't look like any students have their hands raised. If anybody from the general public would like to make a comment at this time, please raise your hand. And it looks like our speaker is Sheila Walker.
Hi, um, I just wanted to uh thank you all for getting uh school started tomorrow. Uh, my uh my kiddos excited about starting school. Um, but on uh this particular item, uh, I just have a question as to why this is really needed. And wouldn't the CDPH be giving guidance and direction? On if we had to do emergency closures or um, you know, stop uh school temporarily? Uh, it's a bit, it it concerns me a bit just knowing what we went through last year. And trying to get schools to reopen um that the parents, I felt like we didn't have a seat at the table and. Uh, I would prefer that everything be followed by the CDPH guidelines. And as you may recall, last year when we did uh start school at SRCS. Um, some of the guidelines were actually different from. The PH, they were. Are directed. Did by the SRTA or the union. Um, and I can just throw out a couple of examples instead of six uh at six feet. Instead of three feet, and that impacted how many kids could attend school when we did reopen. And I just want it to be clear that we'll be following CDPH guidelines and not some other guidelines. Um, I know at one point our um. Uh, labor partners also uh had something posted and that they agreed we wouldn't go back to school for fourteen days until unless we. Didn't have one case or we had zero cases for fourteen days in Sonoma County. That's what might concern some of us as parents. Um, that we don't, you you know, we want to make sure that we're following CDPH. Or um, you know, a set of guidelines versus um someone making a decision and um. Talking with labor partners and maybe not even the parents. Talking with labor partners and maybe not even the parents and can make decisions like that on their own. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other um commenters?
Um President Fong, it looks like there are no more hands.
I'd like to. I'd like to move to adopt the emergency resolution, delegating authority to our superintendent to take the necessary actions to protect students and staff. From the spread of coronavirus.
Oh, second.
Was that going to include that amendment?
With the with the amendment from President Fong.
All right, so that was moved by Director De La Cruz and seconded by Director Sheffield.
Director De La Cruz.
Aye.
Director Sheffield.
Aye.
Director Manieri.
Aye.
Director McCormick.
Aye.
Director Flores.
Aye.
President Fong.
Aye, thank you. All right. Um. Moving on. Last action item. Board policy 9250, board remuneration, annual consideration of increase each July, support policy. Superintendent.
Thank you, Board President Fong and members of the board. Uh we bring before you um uh board remuneration and annual consideration of increase each July. Obviously, we are in August. I before I move further, I do want to provide a correction. Um under the financial impact statement, there is a correction that if approved. With the 46305, it will be an annual total of $5,556.60. The combined total is correct. Um so the board is asked to consider the revision of board policy 9250. Which increases the stipend for board members by 5% from 441 per month to 46305 per month. And with that, I'll hand it back over to you, Board President Fong.
All right, questions, board? Seeing none, so open it to public comment.
If there are any students that would like to make a public comment on item E7 at this time, please raise your hand. And it does not look like we have any hands from students. If there's anybody from the general public that would like to make a comment on item E7, please raise your hand. And President Fong, there are no hands raised.
Um any other discussion, board? So just as a little historical reminder, we actually had not increased this for years. Years, and then I think we finally took a look at board policy and. Started back with it last year, so this will be the second um annual increase. Action item board.
I'm going to approve board policy 9250, board remuneration, annual consideration of increase each July.
And I'd like to second with just a reminder that um helping people to. Engage in public service, especially those who might have to be giving up other paid work, is an important equity. Um action for this board to take to ensure that folks who are younger, folks who may be working a couple of jobs to make these work. Make this time work. Um I'm I'm very supportive of this action. And I second.
Motion by clerk Flores and seconded by Director De La Cruz. So Gina, can we have that vote, please?
Director Flores.
Aye.
Director De La Cruz.
Aye.
Director Manieri.
Aye.
Director Sheffield.
Aye.
Director McCormick.
Aye.
President Fong.
Aye, thank you. That passes. We're on consent items now. Um. Consent two through. Two through 27.
This is the most consent items I've ever seen.
The same, right, right?
So I'm going to say something out loud in that conversation I had with Superintendent Truenell as we were working on the agenda as her new superintendent and. We get on handle on things. When we try to. Move policy as board members and we need to discuss hard issues. As we're tackling educational justice, equity, right, access, equitable access, it takes. These kinds of discussions are important. They take a long time. So I've asked her to try to move as many things to consent. As she possibly believes we can, that just means we're reading it. We have committed to read these. They all have reports. We all need to understand. She also speaks to us if we have questions, and then if we really have questions that we want to bring to the public, we can pull that item for discussion. So it's not like no one's paying attention to these. We are all committed to doing that work, reading every single one of these. I know you did. I did, and so that's how we are moving things along that um. To do the more important kind of policy work. Director Sheffield.
Um I very much appreciate this, and I move for approval of items two through 27 um of consent items.
My second.
Thank you, Director Sheffield and Director De La Cruz. Can we have that vote, please? Oh, wait. Yes, we need to vote.
Director Sheffield.
Aye.
Director De La Cruz.
Aye.
Director Manieri.
Aye.
Director McCormick.
Aye.
Director Flores.
Aye.
President Fong.
Aye, thank you, everyone. Will of the minutes, we have two minutes, two agendas to approve. Um special board meeting held on uh June 16, 2021.
I'd like to move to approve the minutes of the special board meeting on June 16, 2021. Second.
Okay, so that was moved by Director De La Cruz and seconded by Director Manieri.
Director De La Cruz.
Aye.
Director Manieri.
Aye.
Director Sheffield.
Aye.
Director McCormick.
Aye.
Director Flores.
Aye.
President Fong.
Aye, thank you. Approval of the minutes of the regular board meeting held on June 23, 2021.
I'd like to move to approve the minutes of the regular board meeting held on June 23, 2021.
And that was uh moved by Director De- De La Cruz and seconded by Director uh Flores.
Director De La Cruz.
Aye.
Director Flores.
Aye.
Director Manieri.
Aye.
Director Sheffield.
Aye.
Director McCormick.
Aye.
President Fong.
Aye, thank you. Board members, do you have any requests for information tonight? I do. Director Flores and then Director De La Cruz.
And I and I think this has been asked before, uh but uh. Um the I I like to know the IGP numbers uh from last year to see who uh who actually, I mean, the number of actual graduates. And uh those students who are taking advantage of or who are taking advantage of AB104. Uh and the uh how many of them went to summer school and how many actually graduated? Um and how many, you know, still out there without that high school diploma. I just liked to know how how effective our IGP policy was. Thank you.
President Fong, you're muted.
Second time tonight. Uh Superintendent Truenell, did you have any um questions or comments to that request?
I will work with my team. Thank you for the request. If we have any follow-up questions in preparation, we will let you know.
Thank you.
And then Director De La Cruz.
Yes, I would I would love to just hear an item um at some point this fall about the implementation of ethnic studies. I understand we're. In the process of moving forward with a number of classes, and I would just love to know which schools, which grades. Um some shout-outs to the teachers who are taking this up, and I'd especially love to hear, you know, what supports are in place. For teachers to be um embarking on this cool new adventure.
Thank you, Director De La Cruz.
Thank you. So um board members, let's just forget yourselves to make sure that we are reading what's on the informational items because more things will show up on that part of the agenda. That we don't need to have in the discussion part of the agenda, so that is there for us and. District staff has put time and effort into these uh reports to add it and include it for us so we could read and understand it. Superintendent Truenell, do you have anything else for the good of the order tonight before we end our meeting early?
I would just like to note, it is 9:23 PM. And uh I certainly appreciate the diligence that our staff. And this board has gone through tonight uh to discuss and take action on items. And we are so excited about tomorrow.
All right, have a good first day of school. We'll be really thinking of you, and we'll be dropping by in the next few days, weeks. Um as as things get underway. Okay, good night, everybody. Thank you.
Bye.